Okay. Good afternoon, evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 24, 2017 meeting of the Brookhaven City Council, regular meeting. Well, at this point, have a quick moment of silence. Okay, call the roll.
Mayor John Ertz.
I'm here.
Councilmember John Park, District 2.
Here.
Councilmember Lindley Jones, District 1.
Present.
Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District 4.
Present.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District 3.
Here.
Have our quorum.
Thank you, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Okay. Okay, recognition of the pet of the day, and if you could try to keep up, turn your phones to silent or off, and there's gonna be, obviously, a lot of people, a lot of different noise, I did it myself just now, so, apologize.
Okay, our Lifeline Pet of the Week is Scorpius. He is extremely playful and has lots of energy, gets along well with other cats, and is very affectionate. During January, Lifeline is offering a New Year, New Routine, New Friends special where all dogs over 25 pounds and all cats are $25. That includes examinations, vaccinations, spaying, neutering, and microchipping. You can view Scorpius and more adoptable animals like him at www.lifelineanimal.org.
Cute little kitty cat. So, moving into public hearings, the start number one, RZ 16-08, and SLUP 1602 MARTA TOD. And there is request for postponement. Do you wanna?
This item was deferred from the October City Council meeting. At that time, staff was recommending approval conditional of the rezoning and special land use permit. Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning and denial of the special land use permit. At this time, the applicant has requested a deferral, and staff is supportive of that.
Okay. At this point, we're not gonna have a public hearing on it because it has been, had a public hearing already, so, um...
Fine, you're ready for motion. I move that we defer RZ 16-08 for the MARTA TOD to the February 28 City Council meeting.
We wanna add the SLUP in there too, at the same time?
Yeah, several motions, or?
It could be separate actions.
Okay.
Okay.
I second.
Motion and second? Any comment?
Um, you know, for those of you that are here that wish to speak in the public hearing on this application, since this is going to be heard on February 28th, there will be a whole public hearing at that time, so, there'll be plenty of opportunity for public comment. The primary reason for this move is that the Architectural Review Board, or Design Review Board, has not been fully implemented by tonight, and it is, that's an important ordinance that we need to have. We've certainly heard from our citizens that they wanna have a say in how this development looks, in which we need to have an ordinance that allows for a design review board that is in place before the zoning is heard, so that it can be put in as a condition of the zoning. So that's the purpose. Hopefully, we'll have this design review board issue worked out by February 28th and hear the case that night.
Okay, any other comment? All those in favor of deferment, say aye.
Aye.
Now, it's the SLUP 1602.
I move that we defer SLUP 1602 for the MARTA TOD to the February 28 City Council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? And so, all of them for deferment, please say aye.
Aye.
About this MARTA TOD, at City Council work session earlier today, we referred to the administrative's recommendations concerning the formation of a design review board to the Planning Commission for their input. As a new city, the design review board will be instrumental in defining the character for our city. I envision that the DRB will be heavily influenced by the character area studies provided, provided this evening, as well as a zoning rewrite later this year. I appreciate the MARTA TOD development team recognizing the need to get the DRB structure finalized before voting on the zoning application. The zoning vote will occur once the Planning Commission provides their guidance on the DRB. While I can't personally speak for my colleagues on City Council concerning their vote on MARTA zoning, uh, the matter, there will be a redevelopment of MARTA parking lot at some point in the future, whether it's immediate or long-term. However, there's an overarching problem with the MARTA TOD project. It is not a city center perspective. Let me repeat that. The MARTA TOD does not have a city center perspective. What I mean is the city center is not just the MARTA station, but the larger city center area is defined by the original overlay plan. I want to thank the Citizen Review Board for its significant time and impact on defining the MARTA TOD project, and I believe our decision to make this project must be in context of the entire city center area. As such, I'm asking the city administration to suspend all work on incentive requests from the development team. The MARTA TOD project will need a total reset in relationships. The city will need to have stronger working relationships with MARTA directly on this redevelopment, because the city and MARTA relationship is more enduring than with the development team. As an elected body, our relationship with the city center project will not just be in immediate neighborhoods, but with cities as a whole. While the rezoning process will continue, the city, and more specifically, our elected leadership, needs a more active role in what defines the city center directly with MARTA, similar to the other cities have done with DeKalb County. Furthermore, the Brookhaven Development Authority has not developed policies for incentives or economic development for public infrastructure financing. We cannot be analyzing incentive requests from developers while developing our incentive policy at this time. To clear, though, a project the size of MARTA TOD will include, possibly include incentives that's given this significant amount of public space and special conditions the zoning, uh, city zoning requests will impose. But the nature and the amount of any incentives need not to be tied to the large, or needs to be tied to larger visions for the city center and be guided by sound policy. I will contact MARTA board members directly and let them know our decision today concerning the incentives. This is not an anti-TOD posture, but we offer to work more directly with MARTA to charter a plan for the Brookhaven City Center. I'm, as mayor, I'm proud of our efforts to be inclusive and comprehensive in review of the MARTA TOD. It's while, and it's important our citizens understand the great lengths the developer MARTA has taken to listen and incorporate the public idea, but this is our city center, and we are not comfortable with the efforts to date that reflect this perspective and been too narrowly focused. This is not just another project at the MARTA station, it's Brookhaven's feature. I think, I think you guys agree on this? Next case, RZ 1605 SSP Dresden LLC.
RZ 1605, 1336 through 1370 Dresden Drive, 2536 to 2562 Caldwell Road. This is a request to rezone the subject property from NS, PC2, and OI to PC2 for mixed-use development with 10 townhome units, 169 multifamily residential units, and 20,000 square feet of retail and restaurant uses. This item was deferred from the November City Council meeting. Staff recommends approval conditional of the request. Planning Commission also recommended approval subject to staff conditions as amended.
Okay. We're gonna open a public hearing at this point. I suspect, council, were you wanting to extend at least double the time at this point?
I move to extend speaking times to 20 minutes per party.
Second?
Motion, second, for 20 minutes. I, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. What, 20 minutes? Of course, I do reserve the judgment as mayor to decide to stand one way or the other, but I will continue at this point. So, um, applicant, 20 minutes. Yeah. All right, and real quick, I'm sorry, Susan, can you again, remind everyone of the rules and, and such for public hearing?
Yes, please. Other than the time limits that we have set tonight, please be polite, please do not be clapping or voicing opinions out loud, please be courteous when other people are speaking, and let's have an orderly meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your mic's not on.
Check. JR Conley, 1954 Airport Road. Good evening, mayor and council. Over the past 14 months, through countless meetings, phone calls, and emails, we have worked with the community who have provided a tremendous amount of input and changed the plan from initial submission to today's better plan. The neighborhood has had a profound say on the formulation of this project. It was much work for us, it was much work for them, we accomplished a lot. What has changed since our initial submittal are the following primary things. Number one, site plan and architecture. We hired new architects and engineers to come up with a much improved plan. We have increased our green space to over 32% or 1.2 acres of land. In particular, the increased green space along the western portion of the property in Caldwell will truly create a park-like setting. We also improved access by moving the driveway on the rear Caldwell side to line up with Green Meadows, which is a significant improvement over the prior design with the driveway entering Caldwell across from existing single-family houses. We also reduced density. Multifamily density has been reduced by 25% and is lower than MARTA's proposal, lower than the two projects across Dresden, and lower than the existing entitlements for our site. There is no, there's without a doubt a lowering of density as one moves east away from MARTA. Regarding building height, the top floor of our mixed-use building is stepped back 10 feet on the top floor to mitigate the height, and as shown on the site section, our maximum height is 10 feet lower than the Kaleidoscope Building and 11 feet lower than Rosewood. Another changes, we added an ownership component of townhomes. This not only provides ownership, but also improved the transition to the single-family neighborhood. We also, let's see, I'm going backwards? There we go. We also added the Dixie Moon Restaurant, which was planned to be built in an existing structure, and through, by incorporating it in the project, we've improved parking, we've improved access, and, and by incorporating it into the project, it, it works a lot better than it would have before, and still kept the neighborhood feel of the restaurant. In addition, what we did, did not change was we kept and enhanced the walkable retail and dining experience on Dresden. Tonight, we respectfully ask for your approval of our application. We believe we have the rights plan, the right architecture, the right density, the right retail, the right restaurants, we are the right sponsor for this site, and now is the time to move forward and finish off this missing section of the Dresden corridor. We will save our, remainder of our time for rebuttal. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, applicant, opposition?
It's too late to apologize. We're just, we just need a minute to change.
Okay, we have a speaker for opposition, Stephen Peppmiller, from Caldwell Road, District 2. Go ahead.
This is it, I need to just go to the right. Good evening. Steve Peppmiller, 2587 Caldwell Road, Northeast Brookhaven, Georgia, 30319. Cool. Okay, so Brookhaven became a city so we would not be bound by decisions made in DeKalb. We're not locked into the concrete canyon that DeKalb County put us on course for. Our City Council ensures that all development meet Brookhaven standards by first, holding a development to the rules of our zoning code, and second, deciding if a development meets the seven standards for review. So the first check, the council here must decide if this project can be considered for the fifth story. And your decision's not a gut check, it's in looking in the zoning codes and the comprehensive plan. So how can a fifth story be considered? Well, the code is very clear, and the intent is backed up in the comprehensive plan. It's been clear since the beginning. The community also pointed out as soon as we saw the fifth floor was added. Yet, it took until yesterday for a plan to come back that was in compliance. Is this what a good developer trying to do the right thing looks like? Second check. City Council must pass judgment on standards and factors governing review. Awarding the fifth story is not an entitlement. The development as a whole must pass the standards for review. So let's take a look whether the zoning proposal is in conformity with the policy and intent of the City of Brookhaven Comprehensive Plan. Again, the standards and factors are very clear about the vision for Dresden Drive. The Comprehensive Plan calls for the development to emulate the existing mixed-use located there. People have worked very hard to lay out these protections for our neighborhood in the Comprehensive Plan. So we ask, does this emulate the existing mixed-use? No. The, yeah, the vision and protections in place are for a three-to-four-story collection of mixed-use buildings that would continue the village feel that we all like. And recently, our public meetings to gain more input on the Comprehensive Plan confirmed the community's agreement with that vision of Dresden Drive. And yes, the fifth story's impact will be known. Despite the developer's prior statements, the impact will be highly visible. In fact, there will only be a narrow band, less than 40 feet wide, where one could walk and not see the fifth story. So as you can see, the red markings there show the 40-foot band where one will not be able to see the fifth story. So it's basically visible from everywhere, street level outside the red shaded zone. And that's not the only problem we have with visibility. The six-level parking garage will be widely exposed. Again, the red, the red shows where the six-level parking garage will be very visible. Is this our urban village? No, it's midtown. So let's take a look at a more honest perspective. As you can see, if you're commuting west on Dresden, maybe you're sitting at Kaleidoscope on a patio with your friends, pulling in for a quick yoga session, or walking down Caldwell, you'll see the six-level parking garage staring right back at you. And I think it's worth pointing out, all those part renderings we've seen of the development never kinda got this exact same perspective. Thank you.
Please state your name.
Yes.
Karen Dernovich, 3321 Alden Place Drive. As recently as this January, the planning staff themselves referred to the Comprehensive Plan's vision for this section of the overlay as medium-density, multi-story, mixed-use. As we read this, we were reminded that there was a place in the code that defined density levels, so we dug through our notes. According to our code, anything exceeding 30 units per acre with a building of five stories or greater in height is defined as very high density. So by the city's own definition, this development does not match the vision that the staff calls out in their report. But wait a minute, this definition no longer appears in the code. It was there when we printed it off as of May 16th. It was available on the city's website. This was one month after the developer had filed their application and years after the Comprehensive Plan was written. So we did some more digging. We did find that the City Council did pass a collection of zoning changes in January of 2016. But when we looked at what was submitted to the public for that ordinance, the definition of very high density was not listed as a change, even though several other definitions were called, definition changers were called out. We also found that last November, two City Council work sessions were the only meetings where deleting very high density was even discussed. And since public comment is not permitted at these meetings, changes to the text and the code cannot happen legally without public comment. It's a direct violation of our code and state law. Why is this so important? If you confirm that PC2 belongs on Dresden, you are placing the highest density away from MARTA in a direct contradiction of the Comprehensive Plan vision. Now, property owners like Steve and other neighbors of his invested to be in close proximity to the city center, not in the city center, and the comment that was made earlier about the city center maybe not being MARTA is telling me that maybe you're gonna bring the city to them. And I would argue that by doing that, by intentionally and legislatively moving the city center, you enact a taking of residential property rights by the City of Brookhaven. Since last spring, the community has been very clear that this level of density does not work on Dresden. The applicant, in fact, sat behind me in all of the TP meetings and heard our drumbeat around density, height, homeownership, and crumbling infrastructure. In good faith, we agreed to a deferral after the PC recommended denial, citing, yes, 30 units per acre was more appropriate here. We were hopeful to work with the developer during the revision stage, but every email we sent them with this message yielded no change at all. In addition, we voiced our opposition to the fifth story in several of those correspondences, as well as the density, and still, it made no change. But the developer has made several changes, most often just within hours of a hearing. But none of those changes actually addressed density or building height, or except the time that they increased it to five stories from four. They have not brought their A-game. Despite trying to engineer a contiguous open space for months, just yesterday, they finally acknowledged that it really did have to be contiguous to be considered for the fifth story. How many last-minute changes are we going to put up with that do nothing to address the density and height issue here? How many bites at the apple are we going to give them to try to find a way to shove 169 apartments in a site that can only handle about 110? Not one resident would be a given this many shots at rezoning. Is this a privilege we wanna reserve just for developers? Finally, if this is approved tonight, this structure will become a permanent monument to the decision made here today. That the city felt, yeah, five stories emulates our existing mixed-use. That the city found no issue with letting very high densities slip through during a brief window where the code was opened up, and is ignoring other plans that prove that 30 acres per unit are doable and we're facing a crumbling infrastructure. It'll say, the city decided that the charm of a six-level parking deck really enhances the human scale and vibe that we enjoy. That despite the overlay, the LCI, community opposition, the city chose to move the highest density from the MARTA site to our two-lane road surrounded by single-family homes. And let's not forget, the 614 apartments must be needed on this quarter-mile strip. The zoning review process gives the council the right and the responsibility to deny this project if it does not conform to the Comprehensive Plan, if we are already overloaded with apartments and the additional units would not be suitable use, or if it adversely affects the nearby properties. And finally, I would say, the developer could have chosen to design the old entitlements into a plan that meets these review requirements, but they chose not to. They felt so comfortable that a decision made by DeKalb a decade ago on some of these lots, just some of them, would force Brookhaven to bend their vision. This error is on them. By choosing not to conform to the old, the old entitlements to the Brookhaven plan, they have forced you to deny this project, and we request that you do the same. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have Terrell Carstens, and then the person, if you would look at your name on the list, would you please come on up when the other person's speaking and be ready to come to the podium to save time? And that would be Ms. Barner, thank you.
Terrell Carstens, Ustinalla Drive. I'm, I have a question, I know you can't respond, but I wanna remind you that in the applicant's opening presentation, they're showing a plan that was received four days ago. It has major amendments. The, the plan that you are here to hear tonight is the plan for 122716. That was the one that the PC sent to you, that's the number-one condition on it. There have been major amendments since then, so, in your deliberations tonight, I don't want you to make the same mistake the Planning Commission made. The Planning Commission deliberated, deliberated and discussed a plan that wasn't even before them to make their recommendation to you. What is before you is the 122716 plan, and everything about that plan is what we're talking about tonight, and it needs to be denied. The last thing I would like to say is that I sent a letter this morning, or earlier today, to recuse Bates from these hearings, mostly because of an issue with an ethics violation and an ethics disclosure. And I feel that it's only just that we know why he is sitting here and, and what has happened since that time. If there's been a remedy at the last minute, I think that would be highly a violation again.
Ida Beth Barner, I live on Bubbling Creek in District 1. I support everything that's been said, and I also wanna add that it's irresponsible for us to carry on with any project until the infrastructure problems have been resolved.
Catherine Bernard, 1321 Oaklawn Avenue. I would also echo everything the previous speakers have said. I walk this route daily. The stormwater problems are out of control. You constantly see runoff throughout all of the roads. We have potholes, we have sinkholes, and this area itself is pretty much a wetland. I don't know how much time y'all have spent actually walking around it, but there's already a creek that goes through it. There's no provision for a stormwater vault that we've been shown associated with this plan whatsoever, and, I mean, potentially, there are, there are wetlands involved here. So when we're already seeing flooding in homes in District 3, we don't wanna see that, you know, creep even further up into District 2, and this really feels, in, in a lot of ways, like a situation where we're killing the goose that laid the golden egg. We all love the Brookhaven City Center, we all love Brookhaven, but if we keep jamming this high-density development in, in places where it is not only not consonant with the character, but actively harmful to the infrastructure, we, we just can't do it. So, you know, y'all have all heard, well, we don't wanna have to go up, at least we don't have to go to DeKalb to have our voices heard anymore. Well, we're here in Brookhaven, and I think the community is making its voice heard, that we're not opposed to property rights, we're not opposed to an appropriate development on this property, but something with a six-story parking garage that makes no provision for water and sewer, let's, let's take a path from the, the statement that the mayor made regarding the MARTA development and be city-center focused. Thank you.
And if, I can't see if, and then Ms. Thompson would be next, I believe.
Ms. Clary? And then Ms. Thompson?
Couldn't hear you. Sorry, couldn't hear you. Irene Clary, 2545 Oglethorpe Circle. I wanted to address that I live in Brookhaven Township, so every single day, I will see the parking lot, I will see the fifth story. I bought this residence in May, and unfortunately, these few months later, I am looking at a huge apartment complex going in right behind my front door. Second of all, I would like to say that the current apartments that are already on Dresden are not full to capacity. I called them several times in a row and was always told there was many vacancies, both at Rosewood and at 1377. I asked the council that they please look at enforcing the code and why we elected you as we trusted that you would do what was proper and enforce the code for our city. We're tearing down the history of Dresden, we're tearing down the history of Brookhaven to make it a midtown. I've been a Realtor for over 20 years, and that was one of the reasons I moved to Brookhaven, was to enjoy the peace and calm. Many of you don't live on Dresden. I live right on Dresden in Apple Valley, as I have to come out every day. The traffic I face now is insurmountable to what I faced a year ago when I used to go visit my daughter over there. So please consider that these are families. This is my home, this is my life. This is my home, this is my life, and I feel as though I'm getting pushed into something I do not want to see happen to an area I moved into.
I'm Lenore Thompson from Wayside Drive. Hello, Mayor and councilpeople. A five-story building is too high, the infrastructure is falling apart, the traffic is disastrous, we're losing trees, there's sewage spilling already. I don't think that is a green light for further development. There is time to redesign, clearly. In fact, they've been working on it, you know, just recently. So I hope that they'll design it to be more appropriate. My real question is, will you listen to us?
Victor Herrick. And then Bob Hamilton. Victor Herrick. How about Bob Hamilton?
Victor shows up from downstairs. We'll let him speak, but go ahead.
Hello, my name's Bob Hamilton. I'm at 1478 Sullivan Circle. The issue I'd like to bring up is one that I haven't heard discussed, and that is impact fees. Impact fees have been used in all kinds of municipalities all over the world, and developers wouldn't be here with this project or any other project if there wasn't money in it. Now, if they're going to benefit financially, why can they not take some responsibility for the impact that they're causing? Whether it be streets, whether it be traffic, whether it be the traffic, or rather, the sewage situation. In this particular situation, you're looking at adding 180 apartments with who-knows-how-many people in those, so we're looking at more than 180 people. In addition, we all know that the schools around here are not very good. You add that many kids into the situation, why cannot the developers help alleviate the situation with the problems that they're causing with this? It would be some type of compromise, at least, it's not like we're saying no growth, but with the growth that would come on, whether it be this project or another one, then they could help alleviate the situation. But I haven't heard that issue raised or discussed or given a hearing, and I'm kind of curious as to why that is. So I would suggest if they're going to impact the roads and the traffic that's so bad already, then if they want to play, they've got to pay. If they're going to bring in students into a situation where the classrooms are already crowded, then if they want to play, they've got to pay. If they're going to impact the runoff where we have flooding, if they want to play, they should have to pay. In addition, there are sewer situations that will get worse. Again, if they want to play, they should have to pay. At a neighborhood association meeting about two months ago, Bates, if I'm paraphrasing you correctly, said that it was too late in the game to essentially talk about that. Well, that was two months ago. Okay, look, in a national situation, look how much has changed with the Trump situation. If the world can handle that, then I would think that you five could at least give a fair hearing to impact fees. And again, not saying that there shouldn't be any growth, we all know that there's going to be growth, and developers at some point are going to have their way. But along that line, as a compromiser, to help ameliate the situation, if they want to play, they should have to pay and pick up the tab, not just all of us.
I think Mr. Herrick has arrived. Yes, go ahead.
I had to run up from downstairs, sorry.
No, no problem.
Victor Herrick, 2338 Ewing Drive. Sorry, I'm out of breath. Three flights is a lot to run.
You want some water?
No, I'm okay. As I stated, I live on Ewing Drive. The main sewer trunk that feeds the MARTA station, as well as all this development, runs through my yard. DeKalb County was out yesterday to check and clean the line. They used to not ever come out at all after it was replaced five years ago. Sorry, I'm still out of breath. They were out yesterday, and they've been coming every week or so now, because as the worker put it to me this morning, I had to stay in my house and monitor the sewer because my house actually hooks directly to the trunk, not the street sewer. So he made me stay in my house to make sure we didn't have overflow coming in while they were cleaning the pipe out. He then reported to me, the pipe is being clogged by construction debris, dirt, rocks, and gravel. It's coming from upstream, from developments on Dresden, and the new houses are being built. So if you allow this property to be zoned and done, you're basically going to flood my house with sewer and poop from now on. Thank you very much, please deny it.
Robert.
Okay, we have 21 that's listed on there, but we have about four, oh, one more? Oh, Robert Hague, is he up here?
Robert Hague.
Can't hear you. Is Robert Hague in this room?
So, yeah, it's Robert Hague, 1864 Toby Road. Been a resident here for 18 years. I'm just going to say one thing, it's too dense. I love all the action that's happening. It's just way too dense, way too high. What is it, two years ago, my commute was 10 minutes shorter getting from here to the perimeter. The traffic's getting really bad. Let's just slow it down, and let's not open the floodgates to really, really dense stuff. One last thing is that I asked a bunch of my friends to be here. People are cooking dinner for their families, they've got a lot of stuff going on, so the house is packed downstairs. Don't just assume that these folks here are the only people that care about this. Everyone I talk to really, really cares about this, okay? Thanks.
Thank you. And there's no more speakers?
There's no more speakers. We had entered 21 names up there, and we have probably 60 to 70 more cards here in opposition, so they don't want to speak, but we have the message, and we'll put it in the record. And we'll add it to this sheet, and we'll have it in the record.
Okay. With that being said, closing opposition, I guess applicant rebuttal. I believe they were at 1702, if I'm not mistaken.
We need support. We do have some support.
You got speakers for support? I apologize. Support. 20 minutes. I was looking at something else.
Mr. Sims.
The first person is?
Sorry, Mr. Jansen, then Mr. Sims.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's John Jansen, 2973 Park Ridge Drive. We're going to keep it pretty perfunctory tonight. I'm here speaking in support of the proposed mixed-use development on Dresden Drive. This development makes perfect sense in this area. I think it meets the overall intent of what we're going for on Dresden. I just ask that you support staff's recommendation and planning commission's recommendation and approve this application. Thank you.
Good evening. Griff Sims, 2566 Oglethorpe Circle. I live in the Brookhaven Township community. You heard from Irene Clary earlier. We do not have a consensus in our community, as I said before the planning commission, regarding this. I would like to pull up, if I can, can we pull up the site plan? Is that feasible?
The new one? Revised?
Yes, yes.
You can pull it up from the agenda.
Site plan that shows the green space.
No, I was pulling it up from the agenda packet.
Okay, obviously, we, is it possible to pull it up? All right, as you traverse the entire angle there, that is what abuts our property. And we have 10 buildings, 51 units, have been present in the association for 14 years. Our rear building has eight units that immediately abut the property line. So our primary concern, when they called us back in January last year, my primary concern was obviously to first focus on how the physical site plan impacts and encroaches and threatens our community. To that end, I did participate in probably five meetings with Conley over time. I've heard people in this room say they have not been flexible and haven't moved the plan around. They've moved the plan around a lot. I don't want to get into fake news, but they talked about no change in density. You all know better, there has been change in density. The density arguments are valid. I do not diminish that. However, my self-serving microcosm view was to protect the interests of our community and protect our home values. To that end, all the green space in the plan graciously abuts our property. I pledged to this developer that if they met my sacred Cal conditions, that I would in turn give my support. It's the only leverage we had. The five things that I held most closely, they accommodated. I mean, they go from the minutia that most red shirts in the room don't care about, which has to do with the trash receptacles going to the other side, to things that have a direct impact to our community, the least impactful on the larger view. I'm somewhat annoyed because the red shirts in the room, I think it's fantastic, I applaud it. These are legitimate opposition arguments. However, there's a few people wearing red shirts who have almost said red coach. They turned and said, "If you do the A, B, C, D, and E, we will support the development." And they've turned and hidden behind Nextdoor apps and everything else, and have gone in the shadows. I pledged my support if they met the conditions, and I'm going to hold to that, and that takes a little bit of courage, I guess, and up against a lot, but I feel that we have a site plan that, for us, buffering our property, is probably the least invasive of the alternatives that would come down in the future. And for that reason, I've found them to be remarkably, I mean, we sat in meetings when they were challenged to come up with ownership component. This side would have you believe that wasn't done. They've come in and done that with 10 units, townhome units, the change that they did that is last-minute, that's an under-the-table schnooki, is removing three units and increasing the green space. That's hardly a basis to say we're getting slipped with a bunch of funny things here. So the Caldwell frontage has what we wanted, and the people that said, "If you give me this, you have my support," they delivered it, and they still don't have their support. And I think it's a little bit of cowardice, and I'll leave that alone, but I support the development, and I appreciate Conley's flexibility in working with us over the last year.
I guess that was Neil. And then Will Corbett would be next, if they could get ready.
Good evening. My name's Neil Morris Rowe. I reside at 4339 Town Common Circle. I'm also a property owner on the Dresden Drive corridor, within a few hundred yards of the subject project. I'm in favor of the revised plan on this project. I think it's an appropriate project for the site, given its proximity to the MARTA station and the other mixed-use developments up and down Dresden. The reality is that this site is walkable to MARTA, and I believe the density is appropriate. I believe Mr. Conley's done a good job addressing the neighborhood's concerns. That includes the reduction of the apartment component to 45 units an acre from where they started, which was much higher. The addition of green space, and in particular, the addition of the for-sale townhome component on the backside of the project. It's clear that these are going to be very nice townhomes, and makes a nice transition to the single-family that they abut, so I would urge your support.
Ronnie Mayer.
Mr. Corbett's next.
Oh, Mr. Corbett, then Ronnie Mayer.
Then Ronnie.
Good evening. Bill. Will Corbett, Green Meadows Lane. I am in support of the project. I heard the infrastructure concerns and think they should be a priority. I am in favor of the project for additional restaurant, retail locations, additional parking capacity. I think it enhances the aesthetic quality of the property. As a resident and a real estate professional, I think it's the highest and best use of the property, given the options. I think there should be a solution to any infrastructure issues, but I think that there can be an ultimate solution there. Thank you.
Ronnie, and then Bill Roberts.
Ronnie Mayer, 2709 Redding Road. Mr. Mayer, I want to congratulate you. There's a Jewish word called chutzpah. Well, your stance on the MARTA deal, I want to appreciate it. Always said I didn't think a few of y'all had it, but I appreciate your speech, I applaud you for it. Of course, I applaud the Conleys, their whole deal. They have worked with the city. I've been around here for a long time. There's a few people on the other side that when they wanted to move into Asher Park, there were three houses on Caldwell Road. Now their subdivision has 12, maybe 13 houses, and I voted on that. There might be a few less houses, but still, we voted. We took three houses away, and that's just on a little bitty two-lane on Caldwell Road. We've seen the growth in the Brookhaven area. It's been give and take, take and give, give and take. If our infrastructure is so wore out, why don't we use that $6 million instead of trying to buy the green space over there? Use that $6 million to replace some of this infrastructure. And if the parking deck, we do need the parking. I was involved in the zoning where the Haven and Valenza Restaurant is. I was involved in the other side. I was even saying we needed another level on the parking deck there. If you do a smaller parking deck, everybody's going to complain for extra cars on their streets. So to have extra parking, even if we have to ask Mr. Conley to hang a facade on the side that you look at, like if you go to Phipps Plaza, on the rear side of their parking deck, doesn't even look like a parking deck. It looks like some windows there. So I appreciate the Conley group, but if everybody's got much of a problem, they need to go to the next meeting in Shamlee because they're building 185 townhomes on New Peachtree Road, and all those people are not going to go north. They're coming south, and they're going to come right down Caldwell Road to Redding, through Caldwell, all the way down to Dresden. So if you think there's a traffic problem now, and majority of people on Dresden Drive in the mornings, afternoon, don't even live here, so adding this is not going to be the problem with our traffic. You're still going to have the people out of other counties. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Roberts, we have 11 minutes, 15 seconds left for support.
Bill Roberts, 1059 Standard Drive. I'm here representing the BPCA tonight. Normally, when I speak at these meetings, I usually speak in opposition. You guys have seen me many times, and it's a little unusual for me to speak in favor of a project, but I'm happy to do so in this case. And the main reason why is, like with the Walgreens project in particular, they had nine variances. They were trying to circumvent the overlay as much as they could, trying to do the things they wanted to do against a lot of strong community opposition, right up until the night it got approved. But on this particular project, there's been a long process, significant community involvement, and the developer, Conley, has made a sincere effort to make changes. I know that Terrell raised a procedural issue that you shouldn't be evaluating considering the plan as it sits today. You should be looking at the one from December. But again, that's a procedural matter, and while I can appreciate that, and I know she's very diligent about those kind of issues, what really matters is that the changes are happening, you know, before the fact, and the changes are beneficial to the community. In particular, the reduction in density, that's a significant give, as we all know. The improvement of the overall elevation design, you know, that's the direct input from the community. They wanted to look better than it did. Those changes are positive improvements. It doesn't matter if they were submitted at 4 o'clock or three weeks ago, as long as they're making those changes and the feedback is being heard, that's a good thing, and we appreciate that. Also, the significant public space that's being created, the density that they're asking for, they're entitled to per the overlay because they've got 32% green space on the site, up from 25. So that fifth floor that everybody's talking So that fifth floor that everybody's talking about, they are entitled to that, per the provision in the overlay. And that's an important thing I want to raise a distinction on. What the overlay tries to do, and what's always tried to do, is create, in return for the give and take with the developer and what they're asking for, is to create a public benefit. In this case, it's a green space, significant green space. It's going to be a nice cut-through from Caldwell to the MARTA station. It's a nice walking path, you saw from the elevation. That's a significant change and a nice change, and we'll all benefit from that at the street level. What's happening, you know, eighty feet up in the air is less important to me as a guy walking up and down the sidewalk is what's happening at the street level. So I think that's a good improvement. And also, the residential units that have been added on Caldwell, that's a nice transitional buffer between the project and the single-family homes that are nearby. That's a nice change, too. So to wrap up, the BPA, BPCA wants to support the project, but we want the conditions for approval to be that the enforcement of the two-story height for the restaurant, that's a clear overlay condition that doesn't change. That's the minimum required, and we'd like to see that. That second story can be event space, office space, what have you. I know that they've made that change, and that's a recent change, too. It's a good one. But we wanted to make sure that that sticks because that's an important one. And also, you know, the public space and also the elevation, if that can be under the purview of the Design Review Board that we've been discussing, that's a great thing. We obviously want to advocate for that Design Review Board, and we appreciate you, not only on this project, but the MARTA project, having that board in place to weigh in on lighting, building materials, all of the stuff, again, that we see at the street level. So thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Mr. Allison, and then Ms. Sims.
Mayor, Council, appreciate your time this evening. Just wanted a chance to come before you tonight. My name's Neville Allison. I live at 2622 Winding Lane. I agree with what the gentleman said earlier, that there's two sides to every story. This is certainly not a consensus of opposition. I think there's a very large contingent that's in support of this project that aren't here. You know, frankly, I've been afraid to speak on behalf of the project over the last several months, basically out of fear-mongering. You know, I've posted something on social media, and I was told to move. And that's just not the spirit of a community that we all want to be in. Dresden Drive is the destination. It has been, it will be, it will continue to be. This project is in line with that. It further creates Dresden and maintains Dresden as both the destination for retail as well as a place to live. Not everyone can afford a million-dollar house, which is what it costs to live in Ashford Park these days. You know, Conley's doing a great job of providing something for a millennial resident as well, which is something that's going to keep all of those restaurants alive in Dresden. You know, I hear people complain about traffic. Let's get Mercedes-Benz and Home Depot and Rubbermaid up here and chastise them for creating seventy thousand new jobs in Atlanta last year. That's what's causing the traffic. That's a good thing. That's what's raising all of our property values, is job formation and growth. And those people need a place to live. And I think that this project does a great job of supplying that. And on a personal note, I'm tired of driving around Dresden Village looking for a place to park when I go to Verde, you know, having to wait in line for valet. Now we can, you know, have extra parking from the parking deck. I think that's great. Another thing, these people are criticizing Conley for creating more plans and different renderings of the plans. Well, that's because they're trying to incorporate the neighborhood comments. They're not, "This is what we're going to do. This is what we're going to stay. This is the way it's going to be." They're trying to compromise over and over again, and I think that should be recognized. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Amanda Sims, and then Tiffany, I can't read that last name. We do have five minutes and fifty...
Scott Serpas and Kaya Rahabi.
Yes. Well, there was Amanda Sims, wasn't it? Yeah, we have 5:55 left. I'm not inclined to...
I'm just going to jump in line. Scott Serpas, 1323 Sylvan Circle. I've got to be honest, when I walked in this room, I thought I was at the Falcons' pep rally, but I'm just here. You guys know me. I'm trying to open Dixie Moon for the past five years now, and unfortunately, still here, still grinding away, and, you know, I'm in favor of this. And, you know, I know it's not the best means and best plans, but I think JR's bent over backwards in trying to do the best thing you do to put something in property. I'm just trying to open a small family restaurant, and I'm all in favor of this. So thank you all. Make it quick. Thanks.
Amanda Sims.
Amanda Sims. It's Amanda Sims. Next one, she's downstairs, still coming. I can't read that. Tiffany, I can't see the last name. Carnest?
Carnest.
Tiffany Carnest. And then, maybe they're downstairs. And the last is... Care Rajaabi. And if I slaughtered your name, I apologize.
It's good. It's Kia like the car. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen and Women. 1294 Fairhill Lane. Been a homeowner for about six months now, first time buying a home. Really excited about the Brookhaven area, and I just kind of wanted to speak on behalf of the support of the new development and the project. You know, all the surrounding folks, obviously their property values will increase, and, you know, a lot of new home buyers, this is a big investment opportunity for them, and we want to see the area develop. Development is good in our eyes. You know, I understand that, you know, our sewers and, you know, the traffic may not be able to handle it, but that's something, hopefully, that we can support through another project, you know, moving forward with all the revenue that'll come in from this project because, you know, obviously, more businesses are going to be created because of this, more people are going to move in, and revenue will go up for the city. I think it's going to increase our standard of living as well. It'll make Brookhaven more a walkable area, and, you know, eventually, we want this to be a thriving city, and I think it's heading in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'll call last, last call for those three or two that I called in.
Tiffany lives on Mayberry Road. We can't read her writing for the last name, but...
Okay. And Amanda Sims. Amanda Sims. And with that, is there any other support? Twenty-five seconds left. So is there, seeing none? Is there any names in support but not wanting to speak, I guess?
Do you want me to call their names?
No, no. I just, we did the same thing we did on support opposition. So with that, I'm closing the support section and go with rebuttal with the remaining time, which, again, I believe is 1702 or four, or wherever. You guys know that better than I.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Carl Westmore, 3343 Peachtree Road. Before Mr. Conley gets back up, I wanted to respond to a couple of things that were said in opposition. There were a lot of comments about sewer. As you know, that is a DeKalb County issue, not a city of Brookhaven issue. As you know, if you've been involved with any specific projects that's trying to get approved through DeKalb, there have been fairly stringent requirements in terms of holding tanks or otherwise, or they're simply not permitting the development. So it's not a city issue, but it's a county issue, and they are aware of it, and they are not allowing development without adequate provision for sewer to go forward. With regard to the parking deck being visible, as you know, the overlay requires screening, just like the overlay requires two stories on the restaurant. We've got to comply with those things. We know that. The staff understands that. Comparison with other building heights. Mr. Conley mentioned that. Again, I think to reiterate, there's been a lot of talk about heights, but at the same time, we are not higher than what else is in the Dresden corridor. We could not abuse the old entitlements. We've been through that with you. We've certainly been through it with the city attorney, and we did not have the right to revert to that plan, which is probably a good thing for the city because that plan was more intense and certainly not as well-thought-out or as sensitive to the neighborhood as the plan that you have in front of you. In terms of amending the plan with regard to creating more green space, we were told, as you know, and as the staff can confirm by the staff, that we met the requirements for the additional story with the prior plan. That wasn't something to, at the last minute, make a change. The plan in front of the Planning Commission, the plan that's been in front of the staff for some time, met those requirements under the overlay. There have been a lot of comments about number of apartments. By total coincidence, David Haddow's company came out today. They're probably the most legitimate multifamily reviewer in the city of Atlanta. They, again, confirm, and people can disagree, but that the market is good, both with regard to occupancy and rents in this area. Finally, there was talk about this disrupts the history of Dresden. Yes, it does. I think a lot of us can remember what Dresden was like some time ago. I think a lot of the comments that you've gotten this evening in support see this as a way to finish off an area of Dresden in the style that's been generally beneficial for the residents and certainly for the city as a whole. This fills in a gap. It does it in a way that's been worked out over many months, as you heard. The staff supports it. The Planning Commission supported it. We think it's a reasonable proposal. It's sensitive, and it's time to move it forward, so we ask for your support.
I'd like to address a few of the comments that were made. You know, first, just talking about reiterating the public participation that we were involved in. You guys, I'm sure, have read our letter of December 20th that was submitted to the city that detailed our public participation. We also, this is a stack of emails from the community, which continued throughout the year and even into this year. And I also, talking about community input, this was a petition that was handed to a friend of mine at Savvy Market a while back. And as relates to our project, RZ1605, I just want to read the last sentence here. "Finally, we believe there is a viable option with reasonable economic use that would include townhomes along Caldwell lots, with Dresden lots containing retail on the street with a mix of city flats and apartments above and a maximum density of forty-eight units per acre for that portion of PC2 land," which I think is what our plan shows now. On green space, just one thing to mention is that when you look at Village Place at 1377 in Rosewood, they really don't have a lot of green space. I think Village Place, which is a great development and we all love and is referenced, it has very little green space. And I think the intent of the ordinance is a good one, is by providing more green space that people can use on the ground, there is a bonus for height, which does not impact the community as much. So I just think that we are different from some of the struggling developments, but I think the green space is a very good addition. Carl mentioned the parking deck. We, the parking deck is not, is, it will be finished in a way that will be, have a facade on it. It will not look like the parking deck that was shown on the plan. Carl mentioned sewer, stormwater. By law, our stormwater flow rate out of the property will be less than what's existing. There's no detention on the site currently. Also, there are no wetlands on the property. That has been determined by an engineer. Our engineer is here for any questions that you guys may have on those issues. We are, to clarify some comments before, building a second story on top of the Dixie Moon Restaurant. We had an elevation in our presentation on that. We understand the requirements of the overlay and including the office. And then finally, there was a comment on apartment occupancies and rents, and I have a rent comp study that was done on the 11th of January, and at 1377, ninety-four percent leased, ninety-five, excuse me, ninety-five percent leased, ninety-four percent occupied. Rosewood, ninety-eight percent leased, ninety-three percent occupied. Those are basically full occupancy when you account for the normal movements of tenants in and out. The trade area as a whole, competitive projects, including Town Brookhaven, ninety-six percent leased. So there is demand for the project. Thank you.
Are you waiving the rest of your time?
Yes, please.
With that, I'm closing public comment, or public hearing. So we are on to RZ16SP zoning from, on to item number four. Sure. If you want to do questions before motions, or I can do either way.
Motion first, and then we have questions. I move to approve RZ16-05 SSP Dresden LLC rezoned from NS, PC2, and ONI to PC2 for development of a mixed-use building with one hundred and, what was the... With one hundred sixty-nine multifamily residential units and forty-six and seven single-family attached units. At twenty thousand square feet of ground-floor commercial space, 1336, 1342, 1350, 1358, 1364, and 1370 Dresden Drive, and 2562, 2552, 2544, and 2536 Caldwell Road, with the following amended conditions. Condition number two, the subject property shall be limited to a maximum of one hundred sixty-nine multifamily residential units and seven single-family attached units at a density of forty-six point nine-two dwelling units per acre. Said multifamily residential units shall have individual utility meters. Condition six shall be amended. All parking for the commercial and public parking components of the parking deck shall be located on the first and second levels. Any portion of the parking deck visible from the public right-of-way shall be constructed to meet screening and material requirements of the Brookhaven Peachtree Overlay District. I'm adding condition thirty. The site will be limited to one construction exit on Dresden Drive and one construction exit on Caldwell Road. The construction exits shall coincide with the proposed site driveway locations shown on the site plan. Condition thirty-one, all construction deliveries through the site shall access leave the site from Dresden Drive. No construction traffic shall be allowed on Caldwell Road, West Green Meadows Drive.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Motion, and there's seconded.
Mr. Mayor, if Mr. Park could clarify if that's related to the site plan that's been presented this evening or the site plan that's in your packet.
Site plan that's presented this evening. Is there, do we need to, is there a way we have to identify that?
No, it'll have today's date if the motion is approved.
Okay. Okay, motion, and there's second. Questions?
Yeah. So, John, just to help me out on the conditions, which of those conditions that you read in there were new? You had some changes in there.
Change, conditions, condition two was to reflect the change in density.
Yeah.
And, you know, to accommodate the additional green space. Condition six was to, was amended to make sure that the parking for public use would be on a lower level so that, you know, you wouldn't...
Right.
Have to go all the way up. And then I added condition, new condition of thirty and thirty-one, which is basically so that construction traffic would not affect the residents on Caldwell Road.
Yeah. Good. So I would like to hear from the applicant about those, about those conditions and get their feedback on it. While they're, while they're coming up, I have a question for staff. So the, I really think that John's done a good job with these conditions and the adding of the screening on the parking deck is a great one. One, if I understood the motion or the condition, though, what we have is this side parking deck that is currently not on a street front, but if at some point in the future there were to be an alignment of LJ to connect through, then that would essentially make that parking deck street front. Would this condition apply so that it would be screened? And is that screening something that y'all can do? I mean, I'm...
I think the screening that's being referenced is actually on the building in terms of having a facade rather than the very simple concrete parking deck that was shown on one slide. Typically, what we're doing, for example, in our Parkview project in Shamlee, is what it looks like an office building. It's got precast, it's got mullions that look like windows, and I believe that's what the requirement is, and that's what we plan to do, something like that, which I'm not familiar with the detail of the code on screening, to be honest with you, but if that's the case, that's what we plan to do, and I think it'll look very nice.
Right. So that's, Patrice, where I need you to help clarify and make sure that the plan, as it's presented and approved tonight, would have requirement for screening on it.
The zoning ordinance already requires that, so we would address that at the time of permitting.
Okay. So the other questions I had were for, were for you. There was a reference that, that there was not any kind of underground stormwater detention. That is a part of your design plan.
Absolutely. I briefly mentioned that stormwater detention is part of it. It would be a vault that would be most likely underneath the parking structure.
Yeah. Okay, so, and, and that also is a, is a, that's just a code. So, Patrice, our ordinance for multifamily homes requires the onsite retention of all stormwater, doesn't it?
The, the development regulations would require that
Right.
For, for any type of forest development.
That's all the questions I had. Joe, do you have any questions?
I have a question for Patrice. Got a lot of emails on this, as you're probably aware. And there was one email in particular that raised a question that I'd like to have you ask, answer. In our comp plan, we have a step-down density requirement for the Dresden corridor. Can you explain how that's working in lieu of this proposal?
Sure. If you look at the area map, when you step down, the, the planning department will look at from Peachtree to the east going toward the end of the overlay district line. So your higher density would be on the Peachtree side and step down that way. Also, with the existing development pattern in the area, you're having a step down from south to north. So across Dresden, from this proposed development, is much higher density. You would step down to the apartment component and then to the townhome component and then to the single-family detached across the street of Caldwell.
Was this taken into consideration, obviously, when this was presented?
Yes.
And it's in compliance?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Lily?
In, in light of some of the issues that have been raised here tonight, Mr. City Attorney, I would like to ask you, does this development meet all the legal requirements of the city of Brookhaven and all of its zoning ordinances in your legal opinion?
That, that's a long list, Councilmember Jones. Let me answer the ones that I, that I remember from the presentations. With respect to the green space and the entitlement to the fifth floor, it does. It, it, in my judgment, based on our research, it met the requirements before the amended, amended site plan. With the amended site plan, it clearly does. It's 25% of contiguous green space. There is not a, once the, the way the code is written currently, once a developer reaches that threshold of 25%, the additional height is earned as a matter of right. There's not any discretion that the council has to alter or amend that. There was also an assertion that this new site plan constituted a major amendment. Major amendments are defined under our code at 271544B. There are eight criteria for a major amendment. This site plan meets none of them. So it is not a major amendment under our code, as it's currently written. With respect to the requirements for parking, it meets the requirements for parking. It meets the 20% minimum requirement for development in the overlay with respect to even being able to start the conversation of this development or not. It satisfies the code with respect to the building heights. And in fact, it fixed the presentation from the planning commission with respect to the Dixie Moon Restaurant, which had recently showed a one-story plus a two-story facade. It's now two stories on both pieces. That resolves that issue with respect to the height of that building and meets the minimum height requirements for the overlay. It provides the streetscape requirements along the front of Dresden Drive. It provides streetscape on Caldwell, which exceeds what the code requires. It overparks the space. I think, I'm a lawyer because they said there'd be no math, but my recollection from the plan is it overparks the, the site by over 50%. So to the extent that there are concerns about any of those legal requirements, the, the plan meets all of those legal requirements.
And another specific legal requirement was brought up tonight, language concerning very high density versus medium density. Do you have anything you can add with regard to that issue?
Well, two, two parts to that. First of all, that was a, an issue that the council acted on nearly a year ago with respect to a change in the zoning code. It was noticed for a public hearing. It was advertised, the changes, the text that was going to be adopted by the council was properly presented to the public, and the council's already acted. So to complain 12 months later about a change to the zoning codes, a day late and a dollar short. Furthermore, the textual, the text amendment, as I understand it from our previous community development director, as well as our present community development director, was designed to speak to changes in our comp plan that, and this language applied to an old DeKalb County plan rather than our current code and our current plan. So the, the text amendment that was made with respect to the definition of very high density was removed because our code no longer required that definition. There are delays on occasion between the council's adoption of a, an amendment to the code and that code actually making it to the website because of the, the provider that we contract with for those delays. Any, and the, the first page of MUNICODE says it's up to date, but there may be other places. And it directs you to where on their website you go to find the non-codified code sections. And the city clerk is responsible and the administration of her office and the administration of her line item is approved by the council to govern the resources necessary to amend those codes as they're reflected on MUNICODE. So every time you enact an ordinance, we don't codify that ordinance immediately because it costs money. Not only do we have the website changed, but they send us a brand-new paper code of ordinances, which is required under state law that we maintain that paper code of ordinances available for people to inspect and see here at City Hall whenever they want to come in during regular business hours and meet with the clerk to look at our code of ordinances. We're required to have that. So we don't buy new ones of those books every time we change an ordinance. We wait till there's several changes to be reflected and then pay for that update because that's a more economical use of the city's resources to accomplish that mission. So our code on, on the website is up to date, but it sometimes has other pieces and other places that you have to look to be able to find the most current version of, of a particular code section.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one.
Joe?
Yeah, so I have an issue that I just want you to clarify. And it has to do with the sidewall of this parking garage.
Yes, sir.
Now, this is a six-story parking garage?
Yes, sir.
And how many stories are actually visible from street level? Is it all six, or?
Probably all six, yes, sir.
Okay. This facade and this screening issue, can you please describe to me what it is you intend to do?
Yeah, can I show you a picture of our Chambley project?
That would even be better. Picture's worth a thousand words.
Projector here.
Yeah, just put it right in the middle of the table and the clerk will zoom in and you might have
There it is. One thing I wanted to make a clarification on is our current site plan has a total square footage of 23,325 square feet. And the difference is adding the second story on Dixie Moon Restaurant. So I just wanted to make sure it was clear that the total square footage, commercial-wise, was 23,325 as shown on our site plan. On the parking deck here, you can see, this is our Park View on Peachtree project in Chambley. And you can see, rather than the normal standard parking deck, it is designed with a lot of decorative elements so that it looks like an office building. It has what looks like windows. It has decorative columns. It's significantly more expensive, but where we do have exposed parking decks, this, this is exposed to the Chambley rail trail and Keswick Park, as well as Peachtree Boulevard. This was the solution that we, we did in Chambley. I'm not familiar with all the nuances of the Brookhaven code, and so I can't say for sure if this is exactly what would work under the codes. But this is something like we would do to make it more decorative, you know? And this is in accordance with what you see on parking decks in the nicest developments in metro Atlanta or other cities.
Okay, so since we do have a lawyer that became a lawyer because it didn't want to have to do math, when he's talking about 50% overpark, what are we actually talking about?
So the parking requirements of the code are 304 spaces. We'll be providing 473, as shown on our site plan.
I have, I have two questions. So
Kate?
I meant to ask this earlier. Are, are you, are you okay with all the conditions as presented by Councilman Park?
We, we are good with all the conditions. The only one that we would probably need some more study and thought with our general contractor is the construction entrances, I think, are fine. It's the issue of when the project is constructed. There may be no room to get through Dresden to the staging area, which would probably be more to the rear behind the building. And so the ability to go on Caldwell Drive just from Dresden to our construction entrance would be very helpful. I, I can't say for sure if, it's impossible to do it on, under the conditions, but that would be helpful to have the ability to use both. We don't want to go on any of the residential streets. We don't want to go further past Caldwell. We don't want to go up Green Meadows or any of the other neighborhood streets. But access to the traffic light might provide the safest way in and out for the vehicles making deliveries.
Richard, do you want to clarify that?
Yeah, and the way it was written, the access from, didn't necessarily, the way I think Councilmember Park presented the condition, it doesn't specify the Dresden Drive construction entrance. It just says Dresden Drive, which would allow, the intent was to allow the, along Caldwell from Dresden to the Green Meadows entrance.
Okay.
Is what the intent of it is. It's just keeping it west of Green Meadows, no construction traffic.
Okay, perfect. Then I think we're good.
So the second question I had for you was one that has come up recently. And I learned over the weekend, or maybe it was last week, that there was, and there was an effort to try and improve some of the green space at the DeKalb County Fire Station, in which a developer and we had a community activist or, or lead, community leader, Ronnie Mayer, who was working with a developer to try and enhance what has traditionally been sort of an overgrown area that they haven't been able to use. And I think that since you are going to be doing so much site work, it would be a great way to increase that green space beyond the boundaries of your own development. And I was, I'd like to ask if you're willing to commit to, to do that. I don't know what that plan is, but if, but I think it would also enhance that additional green space where you have really contiguous green space right across from that parkside road.
We, we agree 100% that that would be a good enhancement. We have had discussions with staff about a couple of issues on that property. You know, we don't own it, so we don't have the right to do things. We'd like to participate and improve it. One of the problems is parkside drive is actually falling into the creek in that part of the park. And so we would like to, as part of our improvements to parkside, to pipe that portion of the creek. And that would provide a much more usable property there. I've seen a lot of clearing and a lot of improvements already, but I think some filled dirt and some other things would make it even better. And we would love to carry the sidewalk that we're building in front of our project all the way up to the fire station through that part of the project. So we do agree that the green space that we've, the linear park and pedestrian area to connect that in with Parkside Park would be a really good thing for the community. So yes, we definitely would like to have the opportunity to work on that part of the park.
Great. That's, that's a wonderful commitment. Thanks for making that.
Yes, sir.
What, what is the asking price of these condominiums?
The townhomes?
Townhomes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we haven't set that yet. Our, our estimate at this point is approximately $800,000.
Um, no, 100,000?
800.
800, that's okay. Patrice, given the comment about square footage, just technical, from the technicality, does that impact any statement made tonight from a, from a motion standpoint?
Square footage of?
Was the square footage
The commercial space is 23,325 square feet.
John, was that what she stated? Was that the statement that Mr. Councilman Park offered?
It should, it should apply with the new site plan. So I believe it's noted there, correct?
The, the advertisement was for 20,700 square feet. So I'm not, I'm not sure what the discrepancy is.
Do I need to amend my motion?
Um, you can't, based on what was advertised originally.
Okay.
They can't ask for additional square footage. With a plan revision as a part of this process, we would have to re-advertise it.
So, so what is that? They can't build a second story, or?
It's a second store with no use. And is there a way to work around that one?
They, they would have to shift some of the square footage in the, on the ground floor of the apartment building.
This was the restaurant, was it not?
Yes, sir, the second floor of the restaurant.
Mm-hmm.
Second floor of the restaurant, which you were going to use as commercial office?
Office, office space, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, Patrice, so How are you at math, Patrice?
So there was a 3,300 square foot leasing office. Are you including that in your 23,000?
I do not believe we are.
Yeah, the, the original advertisement, based on the application at the time, was for 20,700. So.
So So that basically means they would have either residential on the first floor or no use on the second floor at all?
Well, what it means as far as the code is concerned, Councilmember Park, is that the additional 3,000 might qualify as a major modification under 271544B, because there's an increase in the square footage and the, the floor space devoted to different authorized uses. So that major, that addition, which wasn't part of the record until Mr. Connolly offered it just a few minutes ago, likely qualifies as a major modification, which requires referral back to planning.
Please.
That's just how hard they work to make their deal work.
Stop.
Chris, stop too.
Yes, sir.
Everyone, calm down. We're all friends here. Thank you. So if, if the council votes and approves this plan, what, it's either
They would be subject to the, to what they've requested. They could come back at a later date and request the major, major modification, or they could defer, you could defer it now and have us re-advertise it.
Do you have any suggestions from, as an applicant?
Our, our suggestion would be, based on what, what I've heard is, we would like to receive approval this evening, and we will go back and work our plan under the constraints of that approval. I think we can do that. I think we have flexibility, as Patrice had mentioned, to adjust some things on our first floor. And so we would be fine with the 20,700 that was advertised. I think that's fine.
Patrice, Chris, would that work?
Yes, sir. I mean, according to, according to the code, that's not a major modifier, there's no major, major modification under, was it, B6? So if, if they're, if all they're asking for tonight is the 20,000 square feet that's been part of the advertising, part of the plan, there's no major modification, you can approve.
Okay, I'll go with that. I have some questions as well. This is for Richard. You know, just, just to clarify for the record, stormwater is, is one, was something that I'm very interested in. There are a lot of neighbors of mine that have had some serious flooding issues with, or development. People getting washed out. I'm very sensitive to what's been going on with beavers at the retention pond, the, the folks over at South Bambi that are, are having some issues. My understanding is this, is that with the, with the commercial development, they are required to return the retention rate to a natural state. What, what is the exact term?
It's, according to the state law, which we must follow for any, any development, it's not just like commercial development, any development that disturbs more than 5,000 square feet of area is required to do detention and retention to the, to a pre-development condition, which basically, even if there's development on the site, they have to take it back to, the code says they have to take it back to a, basically what, what the amount of runoff that would come off of it in a peak state and retain to that level, and then release it slowly over time.
That, that would mean like, you know, as if it were a grassy field?
As if it were a grassy field. And even more, there's even more than grassy field, even with some level of forestation on it as well.
Right. And my understanding is that, that those, some of those requirements are relatively new in terms of, I mean, some of the older buildings that are on the property really don't retain any water. don't retain any water.
Correct. My understanding is that there is currently no, for the area encompassed by this development, is there's no detention on the site, which means like the tag office, there's no retention of any stormwater running off the tag office building and parking lots, or any of the other buildings that are currently on the site that are going to be removed and replaced as a part of this.
So you can definitively say that the runoff will actually be improved?
It should be improved, it should be an improved condition based on applying the current detention requirements in the state law to an area that's, has no detention in it right now, that has impervious areas on it.
Okay. The, actually, the biggest, that's one that I care about, but the biggest concern I've heard is about traffic. So, one thing that I was very happy to find out, when you presented, was that we are receiving, I believe, about a $2 million grant?
$1 million.
$1 million grant, sorry. It'd be nice if you got that.
I wish it was two, but-
We're getting a grant from the federal government to basically make it easier to time the lights, and that would net us, you know, more efficiencies on the traffic along Dresden, once that is complete?
Yes.
And when do you expect that to be completed?
I think our current schedule has us going to construction on it in, sometime in 2018. We're kind of, because it's federal money, we're beholden to the federal environmental process, which can, you know, is not easy to work with and can delay projects. But that is our current schedule, and we're currently on schedule right now. And we're talking about, like, maybe about a nine-month, nine to 12 months construction. So, the anticipation is that sometime in 2019, we'll have that, it's advanced traffic management system infrastructure in place along Dresden, all the way from Apple Valley, where it exists. There, there is ITS infrastructure down to Apple Valley, so connecting Apple Valley over to Claremont, where there's another, where it's already installed on Claremont.
Okay.
And that will allow us more, be able to address chain, timing changes more efficiently than we can right now.
We want that, an increase in efficiency of moving cars through Dresden as a result of that?
Yes.
And in your opinion, just, you know, just taking a, just based on what you know about what, you know, after looking at the traffic study, that, the traffic study, the impact of this development, and balancing that with the impact of the improvements, which will hit about the same time, would you say there will be a net positive to the efficiency of the road, or a net negative?
It's, I mean, it's tough to say, but it's pretty much about the same. It's not gonna, you're not gonna see significant movement in either direction, but it'll be about a wash, probably.
So, traffic-wise, these two independent of each other?
Yeah.
In fact, they're, yeah, I see. I have a question for Christian. We've, we've heard, seen a lot of emails about traffic. We also hear a lot of emails about sewer. You know, the other day, I got an email about a water main break on Wayland Circle, and, you know, I basically had to refer to Commissioner Rader's office. Can you, can you just give a description of what is the validity of that claim of the opposition, and what, how the city interacts with that? And how is that a part of zoning and/or the land disturbance permit process?
I will work backwards in my response to that question. The, the sewer capacity and water capacity issue, whether it's capacity or condition of the facility or the assets, is a part of the permitting process. A developer would be taking a huge risk not to know that upfront after investing, before investing in a proposal like this. So ultimately, in the permitting process, they'll have to get approval from DeKalb Watershed for both water service and sewer service. We'll have to do the same thing with Georgia Power, gas, or any other utility they have. As far as the condition of the assets, the DeKalb sewer system is an older sewer system, and not dissimilar to any other urban county in America the age of DeKalb, and they happen to be under a consent decree as well. The watershed that Brookhaven falls into is getting a complete analysis of the assets to ensure that the condition and blockage can handle one current load and future load. We will know definitively in the next month or so what the condition is of the assets in Brookhaven. Anecdotally, the information I'm hearing is that the assets themselves are relatively in good shape, but there are blockages due to decades, decades of neglect on cleaning. So, you heard a speaker earlier tonight talking about an actual case that happened in the neighborhood where they found debris and construction material in there. That could have been in there for five, 10, 15 years, because the county never cleaned the lines. So a lot of what we're seeing going on in the system right now, they're actually cleaning a functioning system that may not even require enhancement or increasing based on the development that's being contemplated. But at the end of the day, the, the permitting process will govern whether the sewer, the water will move forward on the project. So I'm comfortable that process is in place, and that's not dissimilar to any other land use process in the country.
All right. Anyone else have any other questions?
Anyone, any other questions? Okay, going into discussion. John?
This has been looming in this area, the definition of how we're going to deal with this property. You know, zoning, as you know, is a legal process. There are a lot of different factors that go into it. There's, you know, we weigh the seven factors, we weigh all that. But for me, ultimately, what it comes down to is balancing the property rights of the owner with the health and welfare of the neighborhood. And so, we have to look at all those, you know, various components. There's no one gotcha thing that will definitively say, we have to approve this, or we have to, you know, deny this. There are a lot of different factors, and I've spent the past, good part of the past year listening to both sides, listening to the applicant, listening to the community, reading hundreds, if not thousands, of emails, and really taking it all in, and then taking a step back, and trying to assess the basic fairness of the process and how we are going to go about. We're a young city. We're continuing to flesh out our comp plan. We're going to do a zoning area rewrite. We're doing, you know, we finished the character area studies. There are aspects of all those that support this, there are aspects of all those that don't. And in the end, we're here to make the decisions. I will tell you this, personally, from a, looking at this as, as a neighbor, I don't like it. I really don't. I think it's high, but at the same time, the applicant does have rights to the property. In 2006, a duly elected body, you know, gave certain entitlements to the property. And when I take a step back, it's, it's not, I can't say that it was unreasonable of him to come to us and all the parcels that encompass that and expect something comparable. He initially asked for more, he went down on the density. He, as far as the fifth story, he has complied to, you know, the, like one of the speakers said, you know, there are trade-offs. He has complied with the, something of real value to the community. And I can't ignore that. That's in the code, that is in the, both the, the letter and the spirit of the ordinance. We may not agree, but to me, it's a basic fairness issue, it's a basic rights issue. And as far as the health and welfare, actually, let me just say that the courts have consistently said that local jurisdictions are the most appropriate locations for, for land use decisions, and rightfully so. And that gives us a lot of discretion. But also, at the same time, that gives us a lot of responsibility to weigh both sides, to give the applicant a fair shake, to give Mr. Surpess, who's been trying for five years to get a restaurant, and, and, you know, without, without that expectation, without that reasonable approach, normally, if this was a fresh start with no previous zonings, that it was just a bunch of R75 lots, I wouldn't vote for this, but I can't ignore that. As far as the health and welfare, the five stories are problematic, it is a little high, but it does comply. We, we, in the code said, if you, if you give us something of real benefit to the community, i.e. the green space, and as you know, I love green spaces, big and small, it is, it is a benefit to the community. And I believe that there is enough of a buffer with the townhomes and the green space between the height and the rest of the single-family homes, that it is a proper buffer. Across the street are apartments, and down the street, there's a tree save area that will, you know, hide a lot of, a lot of the height, and there will be a facade. You know, we heard about traffic. That's actually, you know, reading all the emails, I would probably say that more than half of the people that, they cite that as their major concern. We, we know, we, we feel traffic, we get stuck in it, we're, it annoys the heck out of us, but at the end of the day, we have to go based on the analysis of not only our staff, but, you know, professional engineers, and even engineers that aren't, that aren't a part of the process, that have independently looked at this, that I trust, have told me that traffic really will not be an issue with this, with this development. Now, if we build five more of these, in, when in a very small area, that, that might be an issue, and hopefully, the next, the next item on the agenda will address that. You heard what we said about stormwater. It will actually improve stormwater. I know that's, it seems counterintuitive, but I just remember, you know, after Town Brookhaven, and after talking with the engineer that designed that, and having a giant vault the size of a basketball court underneath Town Brookhaven that releases water, water in a four-foot, four-inch pipe, anecdotally, a lot of people downstream are saying, well, there's a lot less flooding in my neighborhood as a result of that development. So it's not just, you know, engineers telling me this, it's, you know, it's, it's experience. And as we said, you know, I, I see DeKalb, you know, DeKalb is not perfect, I'm not here to trash DeKalb, but I do see them, watching the interactions between our city manager and, and DeKalb County, that they are trending in the right direction, and I fully believe that the lines will be cleaned, and our infrastructure will be able to support this development. If it did not, I would not have supported this. You know, we have a lot of inconsistent things in the, in the ordinance. I wish, you know, we would have had a density cap before, and I wish there wasn't a previous entitlement, but we, you go, like they say, you go to, you go to war with the army you have, not the one you want. And you deal with the situation at hand, and not what you wish it could, wish it could be, and you have to provide a fair hearing, because that is the nature of a constitutional republic where, which we live, which is not mob rule. We have to follow the law, and we have to fairly address these issues as, with, and take a step back, and, and do as much as we can to remove our personal biases. It's, it's, this has been a tough one. It really has, and I don't take this lightly. It's, I know I've made a lot of people unhappy, but at the end of the day, I know in my heart of hearts that I've done my job here. So, that is all I have to say.
I appreciate so much the passion and input that we have gotten from all sides to this, and, and so much input, and so many emails. I want to assure you that you have been heard, that your emails have been read, that we have thoroughly considered all of your input at length. We all want what is best for our city. We truly do. And we are very rigorous with rezoning applications. As y'all know, those of you who have followed us, you know, we are as tough as any municipality in the state of Georgia with regard to rezoning applications. And I don't apologize for that, and I don't think we should change that one bit. I think we have got to have high standards. We're developing as fast as any other municipality, or they're trying to develop us, and, and we have got to have high standards. But we also have to apply the legal standards for rezoning. And rezoning is not a popularity contest. Rezoning has a set of legal criteria that we have to apply in making these decisions. And, you know, with the Department of Community Development has approved this project with conditions. Our Planning Commission dedicated a great deal of time and effort and energy into consideration of this matter, and they too recommended approval of this project with conditions. And legal has signed off. And so, the bottom line is that this project is in compliance with all of the city's requirements. That's all I have.
Bates?
I'd just like to commend Councilman Park for a really good summary. It was well-stated, well-said, and I'd like to thank all of the participants of the public who have come out tonight, have sent us emails, whether you were for this or against it. We take those comments that you deliver electronically or in person very seriously. And whether you agree or disagree with the decision here tonight, thank you for being a part of the process. It is what, a great part of what makes Brookhaven great.
Joe?
I really don't have anything else to say or to add. I think my fellow council members have expressed extremely well the situation as it exists.
Okay. Therefore, any other comments? Call the vote. All those in favor of RZ1605, as stated, as amended, is that, is that a proper? All those in favor say aye.
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 Unanimous? So this deal's done. I will, thanks everyone out there also for your work. Governance requires following rules, balancing rights, and making tough decisions. And I hope we can make our overlay and zoning codes stronger and a little more consistent, and thank you. We also have some board members opening positions in ZBA, if you guys want to apply, please do. Yep.
Mr. Mayor, can I recommend a five-minute recess while the room clears?
Yeah, will do. Restart the meeting. I guess, item 5, 2590, an ordinance amendment to section 2713-83 development standards. Give a-
This is an amendment to the Brookhaven Peachtree Overlay District. The proposed amendment limits the maximum residential density permitted in sub-area two to 30 units per acre. The density limitation will not impact land use petitions currently under consideration, however, will address future requests until the overlay district rewrite project has been completed. Both staff and planning commissioner are recommending approval of the amendment.
Thank you very much. There's no applicant, because it's us. I guess there, I'll ask for opposition, people in opposition of this amendment. Excuse me, let me open up public hearing. All those in opposition? Any opposition, Susan? Okay, so there's no opposition, anyone else? Yeah, if anyone in the audience wants to speak in opposition, seeing no one coming up, let us close. Anyone in support? Anyone in, in support of this? Seeing none, close. I am going to close public hearing. So-
Should we get a motion done, or?
Yep, get a motion, and we'll move on.
To approve the ordinance to amend section 271383, development standards of the code of the city of Brookhaven.
A second? Okay, there's motion, a second. Any questions?
Discussion.
Anyone, let me get questions first, and then I'll get to discussion. Any questions? Seeing none? Discussion. Bates, you're up.
I would just say that, look, this is certainly a response to citizens' concerns about density and traffic, and, and we're trying to make sure that in the future, we have smart development, which accommodates reasonable growth, smart growth for our commercial corridors within this overlay. But I am very eager to have this as a part of the overlay discussion, when we have the consultants brought in, because sometimes you create ordinances that have unintended consequences, and, and we do not want to diminish the quality of our developments on Dresden Drive in a really valuable corridor with not many more development opportunities. So as we go through this overlay ordinance rewrite, you know, this, this is something that we should really have the consultants think about, so that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot just to try and be reactive, but ultimately, have code, a code of ordinances in the overlay that, that supports smart growth.
Okay. Any more comments? Joe, did he want anything? I couldn't tell by your-
No, I'm fine.
Green light, okay. Seeing none? Jeez. It's on vibrate, but it was on somewhere, it made a lot of noise. I apologize, everyone out there, made a lot of noise. That being said, I guess all those in favor, say aye.
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 Unanimous. Okay, item six, Plenary Platt appeal for 1750- Okay, item six, preliminary plat appeal for 1757 and 1762 North Druid Hills Road. Case, how are we, is it, Chris, are you running or is...
Patrice will give the basic background facts and then you'll call on Mr. Yusupov, who represents the appellant.
Okay.
So the applicant has submitted a preliminary plat for the properties located at 1754 and 1762 North Druid Hills Road. The plat was denied due to the requirement for right-of-way dedication not being met. The applicant has since appealed the department's denial and that must be heard by the city council.
So at this point, I'll call the applicant.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. I stand before you as the owner for AY Consulting Services LLC, the owner of the property, which is the subject of this appeal. I also stand before you as a resident, a husband, a father of two, a City of Brookhaven business owner and an investor in this great city of ours. I've had an opportunity to review the opinion letter from the city's attorney in regards to this matter just a couple of days ago. And while I respect the city attorney as a colleague in the profession, I believe we've agreed to disagree on the interpretation of the legal standards applicable to this case. On that note, I will also agree to disagree with mayor and city council, should you deny my appeal and invoke my right for judicial review. I want to tell you a little bit about myself. In the late 1980s, my family immigrated to the great, to this great nation to escape political injustice and religious persecution of the former Soviet Union. We arrived a family of four with practically the shirts on our backs and with drive and ambition to get a piece of our American dream. As a naturalized citizen of this great nation and a learned professional in law, I have a unique perspective and exceptional appreciation for the United States Constitution. And in particular, as relevant to this case, the Fifth Amendment of the Bill of Rights, which a relevant part reads, "Nor shall private property be taken for public use without just On Monday, I emailed mayor and city council a copy of the Dolan case, a ruling by the United States Supreme Court. I hope that you've had an opportunity to review this case and consider it, as I will focus my entire argument by highlighting some of the relevant precedent of that case. I also have copies of that case, should anybody wish to have one. I'll start with the syllabus of the case on page three and just highlight a few paragraphs. In that case, Dolan, the petitioner, I'm going to start with syllabus under 2311. The city planning commission of respondent city conditioned approval of petitioner Dolan's application to expand her store and pave her parking lot upon her compliance with dedication of land for public greenway along a creek, I'm going to skip ahead, and also for dedication for traffic relief. She appealed to the commission, to the commission's denial of her request for variances from these standards to the Land Use Board of Appeals alleging the land's dedication requirements were not related to the proposed development and therefore constituted uncompensated taking of her property under the Fifth Amendment. So far, this case echoes very much to my circumstances. Going on further, let's read under paragraph A. Under well-established doctrine of unconstitutional conditions, the government may not require persons to give up constitutional rights in exchange for a discretionary benefit conferred by the government where the property sought has little or no relationship to the benefit. In evaluating this claim, it must be determined whether an essential nexus exists between the legitimate state interests and permit condition. If one does, then it must be decided whether the degree of exactions demanded by the permit conditions bears the required relationship to the projected impact of the proposed development. When I applied for my preliminary plat, the first time I was told of this right-of-way requirement, I was simply told the following. North Druid Hills Road is an arterial with a right-of-way of 100 feet, 50 feet from the center line. So additional right-of-way needs to be dedicated to meet 50 foot from center line. It is my understanding that this is merely a recitation of the design requirements of the zoning ordinance. Later and before this hearing, just a few days before this hearing, I read in the city attorney's letter to the council and mayor, the right-of-way dedication requirement is intended to obtain additional right-of-way for patently public purposes, including utility expansion, sidewalks, public trails and additional traffic lanes, all in an effort to avoid excessive congestion as a result of intensified use of Gale Drive. It's important to note that the parcels in question are two single-family resident parcels and used to house two single-family residences. My plans were to expand that to five single-family residences, well within the allowable density and requirements of the zoning ordinance. I did not ask for rezoning. I did not ask for any variances from the zoning ordinance. In fact, my five lots fit perfectly, except for this right-of-way requirement. The rough proportionality test, which is determined by, which was discussed in this case, has no precise mathematical calculation, but the city must make some sort of individualized determination that the required dedication is related both in nature and extent to the proposed development's impact. This is essentially a reasonable relationship test adopted by the majority of state courts. Note again, I have recastated two points that I have been given for why this right-of-way is required. It is my argument that the city has failed to meet its requirement in giving me the proof for this determination. And the burden, according to this Supreme Court case, was on the city and not on me to disprove it. I'm going to move on to the opinion of the case and I'm going to page six. This is the beginning of the opinion. The taking clause of the Fifth Amendment of the United States made applicable to the states through the Fourteenth Amendment provides, "Nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." One of the principal purposes of the taking clause is to bar government from forcing some people alone to bear public burdens which in all fairness and justice should be borne by the public as a whole. I'm just going to move on to page 11. I am not arguing that there is not an essential nexus between the requirement of the right-of-way. What I am arguing is that you have not satisfied the reasonable relationship test. And I'm going to read from Dolan case, which is very similar to mine. And in that case, the Dolan, the city actually did a traffic study and found 435 trip increase as a result of the development. And yet, that court found as follows. With respect to the pedestrian bicycle path, we have no doubt that the city was correct in finding the larger retail sales facility proposed by the petitioner will increase traffic on the streets of the central business district. The city estimates the proposed development will generate roughly 435 additional trips per day. Dedication for streets, sidewalks and other public ways are generally reasonable exactions to avoid excessive congestion from proposed property use. I'm going to stop for a second and once again emphasize, I'm asking for three additional But on the record before us, the city has not met its burden demonstrating the additional number of vehicle and bicycle trips generated by petitioner's development reasonably related to the city's requirement for dedication of a pedestrian and bicycle path easement. The city simply found the creation of the pathway could offset some traffic demand and lessen the increased traffic congestion. Once again, the test is no precise mathematical calculation is required, but the city must make some effort to quantify its finding, support of dedication that pedestrian pathway beyond the conclusory statement that it could set off some traffic. My argument is simple. The city has not met its requirement. It has not proven, it has not done a traffic study. It hasn't told me anything beyond it is a code requirement. It is well-established rule that while your ordinance could be valid as written, that as applied in my case, it is unconstitutional. Thank you.
You? The city speaks for 10 minutes?
Mayor and council, I promise not to be anywhere close to 10 minutes. Our code has been applied the same way it's applied in this case on numerous properties along North Druid Hills. Subdivisions, new construction, new development. In each and every case, we have demanded, as we are entitled to do under our code and under the Constitution of Georgia, that those property developers provide right-of-way and improvements to their right-of-way along North Druid Hills. All you have to do is drive down the road and you see those improvements and you see those changes that the code has required, that every other developer has exceeded to in exchange for their ability to subdivide property and develop their projects. In our case, and in the case of Mr. Yusupov's proposed project, he wants to develop along a major arterial within the city of Brookhaven and our code says he has to allow access along the frontage of North Druid Hills equal to a distance 50 feet from the center line. That's not an unreasonable taking. It doesn't impede or impair his ability to use his property, doesn't impede or impair his opportunity to develop this project, it doesn't impede or impair his ability to use the property as he sees fit. What it does is alleviate the burden on the city of having to fulfill other requirements and allow for the city to, quid pro quo, if you will, a this for that. In exchange for your right and our agreement to allow you to increase the density of our city, you're going to give us something in exchange. That's all this is. The reasonable expectation of an exchange. Under our code and under the cases, we have established that along our arterials, we need space for utilities, we need space for sidewalks, we need space for all of the things that are attendant to living along a major arterial. That's not an unreasonable request. It's not, it is certainly not an unconstitutional request. Based on the history of our city and the particularized requirements of this location, based on how the code is written and what the code says is necessary for this project to proceed, the denial of this plat application by the community development director and the public works director was appropriate. We ask you to affirm that decision.
You don't reserve any time, I assume?
No, sir.
Okay. Speakers on behalf of the applicant. I have 10 minutes. Do we have any speakers in behalf of the applicant? Do we have anything, anyone seeing none, I close that. Speakers in opposition of the applicant?
Yes, we have Jonathan Epstein.
Jonathan Epstein. Is he here? Anyone else in opposition of the applicant?
The only cards I have.
Okay. Sounds good.
Wait a minute. There was one that did not want to speak.
Okay. In opposition?
Mr. Borders did not want to speak.
Okay. Rebuttal by applicant, appellant, sorry, in his reserved time, which I believe was 38 seconds.
Very briefly, the only cases that I'm aware of on North Druid Hills, the major arterial, that were required to do the right-of-way dedication involved rezoning to much higher density than they were previously used. Mine is totally different. I'm within the zoning ordinance and for that reason, I wish that you approve my request. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going into questions by council for either side. We are allowed to speak, ask questions to anyone who spoke, so that would be the city and the appellant.
I'll start if you don't mind.
Sure, you go ahead.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
I'm just going to go to you. Do you have a copy that can go up on the screen of the plat?
I don't know whether...
If we go to the preliminary, if you go to the attachment for this, I'll tell you, it looks like it's on page, no, they're not paging, they're not numbered. It's about a third of the way down in the packet, shows a plat. Let me, I can probably just verbalize the question to you. If you look at North Druid Hills Road, you've got five properties, two face North Druid Hills Road and the other three are interior along Gale Drive. The two, it looks like two houses that are on Gale Drive with one house abutting North Druid Hills Road is one plat. You see that? Let me just...
I'm seeing a dashed line here. These two were one lot, is that correct? What was the... My question is, however many properties there are on these two sides, what was the original setback? Was it the 50 foot from center of line?
Setback and right-of-way are different.
Okay, I'm sorry, right-of-way. You have to correct me on my terminology sometimes.
I don't intend to...
I'm not a lawyer, but I can add.
Point well taken. I don't know that answer. My, the right-of-way as it was designed, and Public Works will have to help me, I think is originally an 80-foot right-of-way from center line. Because we've designated North Druid Hills as major arterial, it requires 100 foot, which would then 20-foot increase, 10 feet to each side. So there will be some right-of-way already existent as a result of the construction of the road by DeKalb or by the state, however many decades ago that was. What the increase is, I can't tell you.
I got you.
If you look actually in the exhibit that's on the map there, I don't know the dimension of it, but I believe the black line that's on the screen along North Druid is the existing right-of-way and I believe the red line that's parallel to that, just below that, represents the 50-foot offset from the center of the road. I'm not sure, I don't know if there's a dimension, I can't see it from here to see if there's a dimension on it.
I don't see any.
I don't see anything posted on the large screen.
But that, the difference between the black line and the red line is what the difference between what's there now and the proposed or the recommended or required 50 foot from center of road.
Does this requirement, does this go down Druid Hills Road? Is it the, extends beyond?
Yes, sir. It applies the length of Druid Hills Road within the city.
And this extension is, let me just ask one quick question. There was a comment made about the extra traffic coming out of Gale Drive. Gale Drive's a dead end. I don't understand the significance of that, but is that where the intended extra flow of traffic is coming from?
It's not necessarily due to the extra flow of traffic from the development, it's just the requirement for major arterials, which we've been consistent in all developments is, according to our code, is that we require a 50-foot right-of-way from center of road as part of the code along major arterials for sidewalks and utilities. And a lot of cases we're dealing with on a lot of these roads is that it's a major arterial, but the right-of-way was never dedicated originally and we have issues with being able to add sidewalk, put in utilities safely with, on these major roads. And that's why we require the additional right-of-way. And we've been consistent with, as the attorney has said, we've been consistent with this requirement in every development along North Druid Hills Road, plus you can go to other major arterials within the city, it's we do the same requirement.
Right. Then this will be to incorporate potentially down the road, an extra lane if necessary, sidewalks?
That, we haven't determined that yet, but you know, it's the requirement in our code for the additional right-of-way.
Right. So conceivably, if a block like this was not under that constraint and the rest of the road was, then we wouldn't be able to do what was planned. the road was, then we wouldn't be able to do what was planned, or potentially available for planning to handle what really I believe is going to be the mass traffic. It is an artery. It's not Gale Drive, it's North Druid Hills Road.
North Druid Hills Road.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Bates, Lindley? John, do you have any questions? With that, we will close the hearing portion. Going to comment, or actually, let's go with motion first and then comment.
I'll make a motion. I move to deny the preliminary plat appeal at 1754 and 1762 North Druid Hills Road.
I second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I just want to make clear that, that, you know, we're not, we're not looking at a variance in whether we can grant an exception. We're operating as an appellate court in effect here today, and this is an appeal to us, and, and we could only reverse the decision that has already been made, denying and refusing this request for a different right-of-way application. If we found that our community development director was arbitrary, well, they weren't arbitrary because this is established for all other properties similarly situated, we could reverse it if we found that our community development director abused their discretion based on erroneous interpretation of material fact. In other words, if you said, I measure 50, they measure 49, and we had a dispute of a material fact, there's nothing like that here. And then thirdly, if there was a misinterpretation by our community development director of a section of Chapter 14, and there's no allegation of that either. So because none of those conditions exist, there hasn't been any such abuse of discretion, and to my mind, we're not even at liberty here to reverse the decision of our community development director. We, we must support it. It was not arbitrary.
Joe?
I'm recommending that we support our community director in this. I think it's in the best interest of the city long-term.
Bates, John? With that being said, all those in favor of the, what was the, was it denial?
Denial.
Yeah, denial appeal, please say aye.
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 Unanimous. Okay. Getting to the heart of the meeting already. Yes, filing announcements. Okay. I just have a few quick, couple announcements. In the wake of this weekend's devastating storms in south part of the state, our thoughts and prayers go out to our fellow Georgians. You know, these folks will probably need money, staples, water, and volunteer. The Red Cross is deploying volunteers and supplies to the area. If you're so inclined, we do encourage you to visit the Red Cross, www.redcross.org for more information and donating and getting involved. Very much similar to what is, you know, we've done in the past around here with current citizens and where people in Louisiana, there's very tragic storms, so prayers go out to them. In momentous news, DeKalb County signed off on our agreement with them to purchase the PDK green space. Tonight, we will vote on some technical changes to the agreement, but the city of Brookhaven is fulfilling its promise to keep Brookhaven green and vibrant, and at 33 acres, this purchase represents one of the largest continuous green, open, green space acquisition inside the perimeter. We'd like to thank Jeff Bradider and all the commissioners, CEO Thurman and the staff at DeKalb County for the ability to preserve this gem in our city for our current residents and future generations. Purchasing this green space aligns with our goals on our comprehensive park plans, but most importantly, we heard loud and clear from our dedicated large group of citizens who've been advocating for this for many years, the land to be deserved and preserved So this is an exciting day for us. We'll have a couple more exciting days when we find out if we are approved for the loan and grant, and then get to closing, which we hope to be in the middle of this year. Then retreat, we had a really good, sorry, not retreat, we had an advance. We don't retreat, we advance, right, Christian? We had a very good advance this Saturday where we talked about, you know, increasing our presence within the regional and community within the state, along with talking about how are we going to fund these big capital plans that we all have and talk about that this community has gone into? And probably most importantly, how are we going to shore up our communications with our, sorry, Mom and Dad, communications within the city and, and such. So I look forward to getting those things, and I think we're all looking forward, we had a real good meeting, advance there. And then we're going to be making some appointments here shortly. Two people will volunteer to, to serve on the planning commission, and we look forward to presenting them here in just a moment, and go for, and such, and.
I just want to give a shout out to our police department. Since our last council meeting, our police department was awarded, I guess, the city of Brookhaven Police Department was awarded as the safest city in DeKalb County, rating, ranking 29th in the state of Georgia. And to give you context of how high that is on the list, there are over 520 cities in the state of Georgia where rank number 29. Is that correct, Chief? 29. And the safest in DeKalb County. So well done, Chief, well done to all of our officers.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thanks so much.
I believe it's, it's all cities, correct? It's not, is it by population or?
I think it's all cities, over 4,000. I think they excluded those.
Okay. So I mean, it's extremely high. So it's a great testament to you, to you, what you do and your, your force does. Joe?
You just know, like, we like to be number one in everything, so just, just keep going.
We'll work at it.
Anything else, Joe?
No, that's fine.
Lindley?
I would just like to congratulate our community on having a wonderful second anniversary event honoring Martin Luther King Junior Day at the Linwood Center. I'd like to thank Olympic gold medalist Dr. Melvin Pender, who was our featured speaker. I encourage you, if you don't know the story of former Linwood resident Dr. Pender, to pick up his new book, Expression of Hope: The Mel Pender Story. It's wonderful, and some of us were lucky enough to have won it. My, my son actually won it. I think I would have been conflicted out, but my 10-year-old son was probably okay winning the book among the many people who did at that event. The Linwood Integrators Committee who put that event together, thank you, thank you to them, to our Parks and Rec, Brian Borden, to Channel 2's Mark Winnie, who came and spoke and did the introductions and served as the emcee, and to all the elected officials from, of course, the city, but DeKalb County and the state who came out in support of this event. And this has really become a wonderful and meaningful signature event for our city, and only its second year, attracting 200 people. So thank you to all of the staff of the city who worked so hard as well.
Okay. And John?
I'm good.
Agenda appointments. At this time, I would like to nominate Michael Diaz and Madeline Simmons for planning commission.
Do you need a motion to do that? Is that the way?
I believe I nominate, and then you guys will approve.
Will this approve?
Yep.
Move to approve?
Yes, sir.
Move to approves, the slate is nominated by the mayor.
I second.
Okay, great. Any discussion, questions, thoughts, comments?
Why don't we have them stand up and be acknowledged?
Be careful what you wish for.
This is really important, you stepping up to the plate for the planning commission.
Don't back out now, come on up here.
If we don't get quality people like this to step up and really help provide leadership for our community, then we're in a sad shape. But fortunately, we have some really talented citizenry here, and you keep stepping up to the plate. This is a great example. Welcome aboard. We really look forward to having you, and remember what I told you before, your job is to keep us out of trouble.
No backsies.
Thank you.
Lindley? No, not yet, no. We have to approve them. So all those in favor of my nomination, say aye.
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 Okay. Thank you again, congratulations. Agenda announcements, and thanks for waiting around.
Yeah, really.
All right. I'd like to make two motions to amend the agenda. The first is to amend the agenda to add item number five under new business consideration and approval of Resolution 2017-01-06 to resolve threatened litigation by Lamar Outdoor Advertising, Inc.
Seconding.
Okay. Was that number five or number, oh, okay, sorry, nevermind, yes, five. And then, is there another motion?
Yes, do we need to vote on the first one first?
Well, I'll take them both.
Okay. The second motion is to amend the agenda and add item six, consideration and approval of intergovernmental agreement with DeKalb for the purchase of the PDK green space property as approved today by the Board of Commissioners of DeKalb County.
I second.
Seconding.
Motion and seconded. Any other agenda amounts? That's it. We have two motions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
They're moved. Public comment. First public comment of regular items.
Okay, to clarify, these people wanted to speak on agenda items, but they're not really public hearing items, so they can speak on the items now. The first one was Emile Vasagun, and he wanted to speak on character area.
It looks like it's a support character area, do not wish to speak.
Okay, and then we also have Tom Riley.
In case anybody's forgotten me, I'm Tom Riley. I'm sorry, I L L Y, and 1779 Remington Road. First of all, one more time, congratulations on Ashford Forest. That was a long time coming, and as far as I'm concerned, it was well worth the wait. I know we've got several large zoning issues coming up, but I just wanted to remind the city council, there's still an active interest in purchasing green space, like you needed to know that, throughout the Brookhaven area. Ashford Forest we know about, we have Briarwood, and we've also got the area on or near 1664 Remington Road that's in Dunwoody Forest. I understand the city is still negotiating to purchase this last tract of land on Remington Road. And the system we've got right now, actually, in practice, it works for all of us, for now. My concern is, if we want to keep that system working in principle for the future, we're going to have to take certain steps. In principle, I think the Remington Road lot should be purchased by the city, complete with deed restrictions and guarantee its natural state in perpetuity. Anything that would disturb that natural state, in my opinion, should be protected by the current statutes we have and also by future litigation. I'm proposing we hold another, another neighborhood meeting on this particular subject. We all know what happened September 21st, but let's try again and see what happens, with the objective of clearing up any further impediments to progress on this issue. Thanks.
Hello, my name's Louis Jordan. I live at 3940 Shambly Dunwoody Road in District One, represented by Lindley Jones, and I'm here to talk about 1664 Remington Road. I'm strongly opposed to the city of Brookhaven purchasing 1664 Remington Road. Not only am I opposed to this, but the majority of residents in both the Dunwoody Forest and Ashford Glen neighborhoods are opposed to this. In surveys of both neighborhoods, 80% in Ashford Glen and 84% in Dunwoody Forest are opposed to this action. District One already has 77% of Brookhaven's parkland and most of the city's private green space. The street where this tiny park would be located has huge lots, residential 100, a creek with wild green space and easy access to our city's largest park. This park is not needed and squanders our tax dollars. The city would be better served to invest in green space in District Four, or sounds now District Two, where there is no public parkland or green space and little private green space. Residents who live in Dunwoody Forest, where Remington Road is located, are walking distance to Murphy Cantler Park, a bike ride from Blackburn, or a jog for myself. Moreover, these residents are within walking distance to Keswick Park, Shambly's 45-acre public park, and Huntley's Hills Park, a two-acre, well-maintained, child-friendly park. With the residents' private gardens and the abundance of the close to 244 acres of public parks within two miles, this one-and-a-half-acre Pocket Park, as it has been called, is unnecessary and wasteful. The purchase of 1664 would also allow for the possibilities of the city of Brookhaven expediting Project 123, which calls for a bridge connecting the land owed by Ashford Glen HOA to Murphy Cantler Park. Publicly, my representative Lindley Jones and Mayor John Ernst have strongly stated that this is not the objective of the 1664 purchase. These statements, however, run contrary to an email sent to an Ashford Glen resident by Councilman Bates Matheson, and I quote, "Would you be supportive of a simple easement which would allow neighborhood walking slash bike access to Murphy Cantler Park?" That was sent on September 20th, 2016. I have copies of that if you'd like. It is unfortunate that this issue has become so contentious. To that end, talks with the adjoining landowners and a conversation with Mr. Riley, we would like to put forth an action to this city council that they cease, that they, that they cease trying to access and purchase 1664. Will you, Councilman Jones, put forth a motion before the council that reverses the city manager's charge to purchase since 1664 so that we may try to resolve this internally and everybody is happy? Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
Deborah Kidd wants to speak about the PDK.
What about Linda Alexander's on the list there?
Yeah, and then we'll get her.
Okay. Who's first?
Deborah's going to let me go first since I relate to 1664. Okay, I'm Linda Alexander. I live in Ashford Glen community. I am contiguous to the 6.2 acres that abut or adjoining 1664. I am also on the committee that the Ashford Glen Board put together to discuss and evaluate how our neighbors felt about possibly having our private space turned into some sort of public access to Murphy Cantler. 80% of the people said, we don't want it. In fact, probably 80% of them were adamant, there's no way that we want public access to our neighborhood. We bought in a neighborhood that has dead-end streets for a reason. We only want one way in and one way out. We don't want people wandering around our neighborhood. We lived there when the homeless man who ended up murdering a woman up in North Georgia was living in Murphy Cantler Park. Our children were approached by him. We do not think having access across our 6.2 acres would be advantageous to our neighborhood. Also, y'all all know, because I wrote you that letter, about 77% of the park space, I won't go over that again since he read you my letter, but I truly believe that the city has a better place to spend this money. I'm an accountant. There's only so much money to go around. Give it to people who can truly enjoy it. 244 acres of green space within two miles is a lot of green space. Our neighborhood will commit to keeping our 6.2 acres green. We have, we maintained it. We did better than Murphy Cantler did when DeKalb County was keeping it. We don't let noxious vines in. We tromp through there regularly. We plant trees. We care for that property. And we do not want it to become public green space. Private green space, we're okay. Pocket Park is supposed to be somewhat private. That's how it was explained to us at the meeting this, earlier this year. We don't need it. Spend it on people who need it. Thank you.
You?
Deborah Kidd now.
I'm Deborah Kidd from 1889 Ninth Street, and I just wanted to say a very heartfelt thank you to all of you, Mayor Ernst, my councilman, John Park, and all the rest of you, for supporting the purchase of the property. you, for supporting the purchase of the property, PDK Green Space. We all know what a tremendous asset it is for our community, and we very much appreciate the work by our city manager, Mr. Sigmund. This space is an invaluable asset, and we really appreciate the fact that you listened to the community, and that you saw our vision, and that you helped tremendously achieve it. Some of us have worked on trying to see this happen for close to twenty years. So this is a really big deal for several members of the community, and we just can't thank you enough. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing that, closing public comment. Consent agenda. Consent agenda.
Consent agenda?
Seconding.
Motion seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Consent agenda approved. No more announcements, no presentations, old business, new business. RZ, number one, RZ 2017-01-03, Resolution to Adopt Brookhaven Charter Character Area Studies 2035 Comprehensive Plan Supplement.
Following the initiation of the zoning ordinance rewrite in January 2016, mayor and council determined that additional review and citizen input on the vision statements, policies, and recommendations related to the character areas identified in the comprehensive plan was necessary. Request for proposal was issued, and a contract was awarded to Sycamore Consulting to facilitate a six-month character area study. The study included a series of charrettes and ultimately led to the development and presentation of recommendations by the consultant team, with support from citizen representatives from each of the character areas, to both Planning Commission and City Council. The final supplement document, which will be used in conjunction with the comprehensive plan document to guide the city's analysis of land use and petitions, is now being presented for adoption. Staff is recommending approval of the adoption, and Planning Commission heard this item at their January meeting and have recommended approval as it pertains to the form and process, but not necessarily the recommendations outlined in the document.
Okay. Questions?
Patrice, can I ask you to repeat that last comment? And then clarify what it is you're actually asking us to approve tonight?
Staff is recommending approval of the document as presented. Planning Commission also recommended approval, but they wanted council to be aware that they were not necessarily in agreement that, with the recommendations that the community provided to the consultant to prepare for this document, but that they were supportive of the fact that we had gone through the process that council indicated that they wanted to get the community input that we needed.
So you're requesting that we approve this?
Yes.
They're requesting we approve it with condition?
Not really with condition, with comment.
With exception? So with your request for approval, does it also approve for the comments, for the recommendations in this statement?
Yes, so, like I said, this document will be a supplement to the comprehensive plan, so as we have applications that come in for rezoning, we will use the comp plan document in addition to this document to form our recommendations.
Would it be appropriate for council to be presenting the review of this, before we were?
You did in November, with the citizens and the consultant.
I stand corrected.
Questions? Well, questions first before comment?
You mentioned the comments from, you're saying, from their planning commission?
Correct.
Where are those in this package?
That was just a part of their motion, it wasn't a part of the document that was prepared by the consultant.
So what were those, what are those comments?
That they approved it based on the process that council wanted, that we advertised and put out there, but they weren't necessarily in agreement with each of the recommendations that the individual representatives from the character areas had for their character area.
I don't think I've ever had anything so confusing come from them.
How can that then be used in helping to decide zoning issues?
So when council paused the zoning ordinance rewrite, you asked the department to put an RFP out to do a character area study, to get additional input from the community on what they wanted to see in their individual character areas. We did that through the different charrette processes that we had during the six-month review. The consultant then was instructed, as outlined in the RFP, to prepare this document based on what the community said they wanted, which they have done. So at this point, we've asked the community what they want, we've prepared the document to show what they said they wanted, and so to go back and change what they said they wanted, I don't know that that's appropriate at this point. We have the recommendations from the communities themselves, and this is what they've approved.
But then, the planning commission said they don't necessarily agree with what the
That's correct.
The people, the citizens? Well, that's awfully...
Obvious.
That's awfully, I don't know what the word is for that, but certainly injecting their opinion, aren't they?
Well, if I understand correctly, what they are doing is what we might call, they are recommending it as to form, but not as to substance. They're saying, "This is what it was supposed to be, this is the community input," and we as the planning commission aren't saying whether the community input's right or wrong, or whether we agree or disagree, but this correctly represents what you asked for. It's the result of the charrettes, and so it's proper in form.
Correct.
All right.
I believe it was a 5-1 vote, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
I think the perspective here is that the planning commission's actually saying they're deferring to the community, versus saying, "We generated this and we recommend it." They're saying, "We're deferring to the community's recommendations in the various character area studies contained in whole, so we approve the process." I think that's the way to look at, I think we're saying the same thing.
So this becomes a supplement to our comprehensive plan?
It does.
For land use deciding decisions?
That, and also guiding the zoning ordinance rewrite.
Is it also, when we do the rewrite, this is gonna be more instrumental to help guide them in what that rewrite should say?
Yes.
Okay, it's guidance, it's not...
Yes.
Got it.
It gives the stuff that people said they would want, we need to make sure that our zoning code allows for such uses.
Correct.
I think what might also be confusing is that it's called the Brookhaven Character Area Study Supplement, which makes it seem like it's supplemental to the character area study. This is actually is the character area study.
Right, it's supplemental to the...
The final, so it's a supplement to the...
Comp plan.
To the comp plan, right.
Correct.
This is what we all were presented on, and we know this.
Yes.
Nothing new in this supplement, doesn't mean that, right?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
John?
I think I've passed all the questions I had.
Okay. Sounds good. We had questions, I'll need a motion. Any more questions, you have another question?
I'll move to adopt the Brookhaven Character Area Study 2034 Comprehensive Plan Supplement.
Seconding.
Motion and seconded. Any conversation?
I would just like to thank all the residents who participated in this and did such hard work to really coalesce their, you know, the little grassroots areas of their community to decide what it is that they'd like to see in the future of their specific character areas. And we had tremendous participation, according to the consultants, it was kind of unprecedented in their experience, how many people we had come out for all the different areas. So I think that we owe a great debt of gratitude to the residents who took the time to do that, not just one charrette, but charrettes over and over, and to continue the process and go through it, especially those who were designated the chairs for their character areas.
No, I would, it, you know, shows the outreach that the city has done, and the passion that the citizens have, and we're using these recommendations as a basis for our zoning rewrite, making sure we do have zoning codes that allow for the things that they would want. And it will be, you know, a great document going forward, and, you know, I would suspect just like the comp plan is updated every so often, that the character area studies will be updated as time goes on. So with no other comment, right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 It passes. Presentation of the Brookhaven-Buffett Highway LCI. Who's handling that?
I am. The livable centers initiative program, LCI, offered by the Atlanta Regional Commission, is used to identify development opportunities and create action plans to enhance mobility. So the Atlanta Regional Commission is allowing the city to rely on its prior planning efforts, including the comprehensive plan, the Beaufort Highway Economic Development Strategy, and also the character area study that we just finished discussing, to develop this LCI document. So since we have all these existing planning documents, we're not having to go through the full process that you would have to typically go through with an LCI. The city's application will also piggyback on the joint LCI that is currently being undertaken for Beaufort Highway by the cities of Shambly and Dorville. ARC has also indicated that the city should include letters of support from key stakeholders, such as MARTA and GDOT. We have received a letter of support from MARTA related to this, we've reached out to GDOT and are waiting a response. At this time, the department is proposing to submit the Beaufort Highway LCI to ARC. The planned document outlines an action plan for implementation of projects in the corridor based on the city's existing plans. And there is no action that's required on this, but we're able to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions they have?
Only question I have is, are we going to be seeking, like, an acknowledged LCI for the Brookhaven portion of Beaufort Highway?
Yes, so in our discussions with ARC, because they are aware of the application that Shambly and Dorville are working on, they're allowing us to, like I said, to use our existing planning documents to prepare this application to be joint with theirs.
And are they gonna supplement some funding, as they've done in other LCIs, to help us with the consultant costs?
This will allow us to be able to go after those kinds of funds.
Okay, good. You know, as we've talked about at the advanced retreat, it's really important that we push this through so that we can have this codified at some point, sooner rather than later, so that as we see redevelopment happen, we've got some teeth to actually create the vision of Beaufort Highway that we want to see.
Can you elaborate on a timeline on this?
Well, this application will go in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll be eligible to apply for money at the end of the year for next year.
What about the actual implementation of the LCI study?
Well, the city, based on the work plan that's identified in here, and also the overlay district that's planned as a part of the zoning ordinance rewrite, those will kind of combine and guide what study funds we apply for then. So it just depends on what projects we identify that we want to address first.
So is the ability to move forward with this predicated upon getting the money from ARC, or do we do that in hindsight?
You do it after the fact, so we have to submit this plan to be able to apply.
That's what I wanted to hear, thank you.
Any other questions? And you don't need a vote or anything, you just...
We don't.
Okay. Sounds good. Anyone comment or questions on this? None, I'm gonna close it down, close it down. Number three, Resolution 17, 2017-01-04. Christian. Okay. Carl.
Mr. Mayor and Council, what we have here before you is a resolution to establish the 2017 budget for the Vehicle Replacement Fund. A little bit of history, as we went through preparation of the budget for 2017, at the conclusion of that, we decided, the direction of the city manager, to begin putting funds in our vehicle replacement funds, and you authorized $1.1 million to replace it to the Vehicle Replacement Fund as a commitment to future vehicle replacements. That was in, that was December of 2016, and as in 2017, there is no budget to actually replace the vehicles, and this is what this resolution principally is asking, that we establish a budget to replace 15 police cars in 2017 from that $1.1 million that was committed. Secondarily to that is also authorizing the city manager into a memorandum of understanding with the city of Sandy Springs regarding a SWAT vehicle, as you know, the city of Brookhaven is part of the metro area SWAT community, and it also authorized us to reimburse them for the cost of the SWAT vehicle.
Place the motion here.
Go ahead.
So this is going to be requesting approval of Resolution ID number 2607. Consideration and approval of resolution to adopt the budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017, for the Vehicle Replacement Fund of the city of Brookhaven pursuant to Article 5 of the City of Brookhaven Charter, appropriating the amounts shown in the budget as expenditures, adopting the item of anticipated funding sources, authorizing execution of a MOU with Sandy Springs for the shared purchases of command vehicle, and prohibiting expenditures from exceeding actual funding sources.
Seconding.
Motion seconded. Any questions? One real quick question. So we had put in the $1.1 million, we're spending about 651 out of that, is that what I'm reading? Okay, and that's what we're gonna do for this year?
Correct.
Okay, so we have another about $500,000 roughly, plus and minus, to spend on police cars in the future?
Correct.
Okay.
But we had planned through the last payment of the initial lease for, the initial police cars for the city, that those dollars that we are dedicating towards the lease will now become the contribution to the Vehicle Replacement Fund, so it will be replenished. So we've structured the amount that we put in initially at $1.1 million to cover that, plus the lease payments diverted to actual contributions to the fund to cover all replacements over a five-year period.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank city manager, Christian Sigmund, and Carl Stevens, and our finance department for the work that you've done to really help clarify these issues that we need to be stated so clearly to council, and for the added transparency you're putting to how we do everything that we do. It's just, I'm just very, very thankful.
Any comments? Questions? Comments? Anyone want to talk? I need a motion. Oh, that's right, there's already been a motion. Any more comments, seeing that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's been approved. Okay, moving on to number four, Resolution 2017-01-05, consideration and approval of resolution, the notice for the 2017 election and publishing of qualifying fees and dates. That's, Chris, is that, or?
This is me.
Clerk, yes.
This is just to do by state law, required by state law that we advertise by February 1st what the qualifying fee will be for our upcoming district elections, which is two, which are two and four, and the qualifying fee will be $360. And also, we're advertising what qualifying days will be, due to the fact that we do have a meeting on that Tuesday, the 22nd. By state law, we have to have our candidates qualify that week, so we're setting the qualifying days for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and I have the hours there, but there will be more information out when we get closer to that time, but qualifying will be in August, and it will be $360. And also, DeKalb County will do our election, we will confirm with them and let them know that they will be, we have a contract in place that we voted on years ago, and we just give them notice that they will do the election. Thank you.
For the record, Susan, would you actually say the dates for that Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday?
Yeah, that would be Wednesday, August 23rd, through Friday, August 25th. Yeah, that would be Wednesday, August 23 through Friday, August the 25th. And of course, it's from 8:30 to 12:30, and then we have a break at lunch, and then we open back from 1:30 to 4:30. And we're having a council meeting that Tuesday before that, so.
Thank you.
We didn't want to be interrupted during a council meeting, somebody qualifying.
I move that we approve Resolution 2017-01-05.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, going to item five, and I don't have it up in front of me, so I know we have.
Item five, Mr. Mayor, is the consideration of the resolution of threatened litigation from Lamar Outdoor Advertising. This is a situation where the Georgia Department of Transportation is requiring Lamar to move one of its billboards at Lake Huron. The General Assembly, in its infinite wisdom, passed the burden and cost of that movement, or that relocation to local governments, when those local governments have ordinances like ours that prohibit billboards. So Lamar filed a application with the Community Development Department. They followed the code and denied that application. Lamar then threatened to sue us for a cost of over $4.5 million for not allowing them to move their billboard. And in an effort to resolve that dispute, and by our piece, the city is agreeing in the resolution to allow them to move. All parties bear their own costs and expenses, and there is no financial payment or burden on the city for this resolution.
Okay, any questions? Here, motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2017-01-16, Lamar Outdoor Advertising to Resolve Litigation.
Second.
Any comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's approved unanimously. Number six, a motion to approve the PDK Green Space IGA. Christian?
As mentioned earlier, the PDK purchase agreement needed to be adjusted based on some technical requirements from DeKalb County. This agreement is consistent with it was approved by the county today. We recommend approval.
I move to approve the PDK agreement, the integral governmental agreement with DeKalb County for the purchase of PDK Green Space.
I second.
Motion second. Any comments?
Just, just to reiterate that, you know, this is a fantastic purchase that, that is going on. I completely support the acquisition of the Green Space. My objections are just to the form of the agreement with DeKalb County.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That's three, one.
Thank you.
Okay. No other business, and then we go into public comment number two.
Two.
Two public comments. Okay.
One more time, all y'all got to hear was the doom and gloom, and there is a rainbow, so I'm sorry about that.
Is that your name is Louis Jordan?
I will, yeah. One more time. Louis Jordan, District 1, 3940 Shambly Dunwoody Road, Topic 1664, Remington Road. And I apologize, I got cut short. Yeah, this has been a very contentious issue within our neighborhood. A lot of people are against this action. And in, in that spirit, I started talking with some of the adjoining landowners, and in conversation with Mr. Tom Riley, who spoke earlier. And we would like to try and resolve this internally, and see if we can't just talk with the adjoining landowners, discuss a private easement that would allow continued neighborhood access to this, to the land. Both I, Tom Riley, and one of the adjoining landowners agree to this proposal. And what we would like to do is request that possibly Councilman Jones, who is our representative, put forth a motion to cease at this time, or at least give us a little break or a little breathing room to discuss this option further. Also, given the overwhelming opposition by both Ashford Glen and the Dunwoody Forest Neighborhoods purchasing 1664, we think that keeping the property zoned residential and preserving the use of the woods that our neighborhoods have been sharing now for 60 years, nothing has changed, is in the best interest of everybody. And again, you know, will Councilman, Woman Jones put forth a motion before the council that reverses the city manager's charge to purchase 1664? Thanks again for your time. I think that was a little bit more livelier than the first one, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Fedor.
Hello, Ken Fedor, from 3942 Ashford Trail. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Councilwoman, Councilman. Louis stole my thunder there. I, I live next door to 1664 Remington. I'm the last house in Ashford Trail. And in, in the spirit of what you talked about congratulating everybody regarding the character area study and all these residents' involvement, I would ask that you continue that by taking into consideration our neighborhood's survey, which has 80%, of the respondents do not want the city to acquire 1664. Dunwoody Forest also had a similar survey earlier in the year with a similar percentage of respondents saying, please don't do this. And without going into the history of, of the previous meeting, they cite the fact that this pocket park, or whatever we want to call it, is at the very end of a dead-end street. It's a half mile to the, to the exit, Shambly Dunwoody Road. There's no sidewalks on that street. There are no sidewalks on our street. The traffic, the parking, et cetera, those things might be able to be addressed, but this is what they cite. People buying a cul-de-sac, as we all know, for a reason, and a lot of the original owners still are on Remington, and a lot of original owners are still in our neighborhood. So all we ask for is that, you know, when we looked at all this, I tried to be a little bit like Switzerland, because I, I literally toggle both neighborhoods. I am that property owner between the two neighborhoods. And I tried to just to gather the facts. You didn't hear any insightful emails or read anything from me, because I tried to gather the facts and develop a consensus. And I said, I'm going to go with what the majority of the people in both of our neighborhoods wanted. And it might have been able, it might have been put together a little more cohesively, it might have been spun a little more civilly at that particular meeting, but nonetheless, the numbers are the numbers, and the majority, it's not even 51%. It's over 80% in both neighborhoods, is, is what they're asking, to let private owners, I know the owner of that property, and if, if we can agree to delay the city buying it, I will talk to them about putting an easement in and sharing part of that easement with my backyard property. Because as Louis said, for 60 years, the neighborhood, the residents of both neighborhoods, and Tom and I, we all share that property. People go back generations. That's how they, they walk through our woods, and we just want to keep it that way. And we think that private ownership is still the best solution. No offense to the city. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I have no more.
Okay, mayor's coming. Again, another great day in Brookhaven, getting that green space, having that contract signed. And it's, you know, really looking forward to that closing. Community outreach and, and input that's come from our character area studies being codified. Now we're moving on our zoning rewrite to hopefully help with our inconsistencies in our zoning codes and our overlays. I look forward to doing that. And, you know, moving on. So anyone else have any comments?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, second. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None?